And Ted, I'll just turn it right over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. We have a pretty long agenda. We'll go really quickly, so Mary has time to go over her legal. Parts or part two for legal presentation. So I'll go over each of the items quickly and then just ask if you want them on consent or here and some are obviously going to be heard. Just because we've received public testimony. So the first one isn't. So the first one's going to be heard, it's an appeal of an administrative approval, so we will certainly hear that one. The second one is ratification of findings, so that generally goes on consent agenda unless a commissioner sees something they want changed in the findings. So.
Oh, sorry, were there any changes? That any commissioners have for that item? Okay, then we'll just put that on consent.
Okay. So item number three, BRH 21128. We have. A couple of ADUs or garages in here that are a little taller than the house. There is guidance and kind of a. I would say, you know, city goals are promoting ADUs, so trying to find a way for. Everybody to be able to have an ADU if they want one, even if they're in a one-story house or a very small house. It's a little more difficult on the historic side because of our guidelines, but. We do on occasion, and I foresee the guidelines changing based on feedback from leadership. That rather than just saying. A garage or ADU shouldn't be taller than the house, just saying it shouldn't negatively impact overpower or adversely impact the property or the house. Is kind of a finding we really should be making. But just saying it shouldn't be taller than the house period. Become somewhat problematic when a lot of these houses are pretty small and. The city goals are encouraging ADUs, so. We do have a few of those. A couple here on the agenda and then I know there'll be more coming. Too, so that's just something we need to think about as a commission. So we do have item number three, DRH 21128, which we do have a garage ADU. That is. About three feet taller than the house. So do we want to hear that or have that on consent?
I personally. I was just talking about this with my husband last night. I think we're getting to a point where ADUs pretty much need to happen. On every property if possible, just because of the density issue. And so I personally would not mind with to have these go on consent, especially item number three.
So you want to hear that one? Was that?
Oh, I I wouldn't mind having it be on consent.
I would like to hear it, but maybe just a. A word of clarification, I mean, if the guidelines still talk about. And state. The height issue, right? I mean, the height. It's mentioned in there that the height, it cannot be taller than the house. As well as some other, some other language. There's still currently the guidelines that we are enforcing, correct?
Yeah, and again, it's a guideline, so it's not like it's code, so the commission. You know, can, you know, doesn't have to follow that guideline or can. You know, in the past, the commission has looked at these projects and has looked at them like, okay, the how the garage is taller than the house, but due to the location of the garage on the property. Various other things, how it's designed and stuff, it doesn't overpower the house, so that's been. You know, that was, that's been, that was done pretty commonly. The first few years of this job, so it's up to you guys. If you want to, if you want to hear them. You know, that's why I just bring it up, we have a couple of these, so I just want to, you know.
I think it needs to be consistent no matter what. But I mean, again, with. Leadership. Up the line, I do foresee changes being made. To where we probably wouldn't even be hearing these in the future anyway, and they would just be approved at stock level. And I would not. I would not be opposed to these being on consent.
This is Commissioner Rapp, and I agree with Commissioner Montoto.
I guess I am okay with this one being on consent, I think it's still a case by case issue on how tall, how much taller they are, so. This one's a good design, so I think. This one's good on consent.
I'll just add that in the future, we are going to remove ADUs from being automatically reviewed by the commission unless. They're higher than the house, in which case we will bring them still to the commission, or they exceed lot coverage. Then they would still need to go to the commission. So that's kind of the way, the way we're going, so we would still. Bring them for you to take a look at if you like the design or not, but that's kind of the, one of the ways we're going and. You know, kind of where it sounds like we would probably be modifying the guidelines to have some flexibility on, on the height. As well, because on some of these properties are either gonna. If the person wants to have an ADU, they're either going to go taller than the house, or they're gonna have it ground level and maybe exceed lot coverage, so it's kind of like what? What do we want, you know, do we want more open space on the lot or so it's? So this one, we're okay on consent, okay?
I would prefer to hear it.
Okay.
Okay.
Please.
Number four is replace siding. And windows, this one's mostly here for the siding, the windows we generally don't bring to the commission. But we have started a process of bringing. If original sightings being pulled off, especially, we want to bring those to the commission to review. The applicant claims this isn't the original sighting, but he's not really shown. I'm not sure if it is or not, so we brought this to the commission, it is. It does look like to be old wood siding, so. Just out of caution, we made it come to the commission. To have you guys look at it. So that one. That's not one that we've heard from the public or anything on. So is that, does that one hurt or consent?
I actually want to hear that one, I think it's important that we hear this one.
Okay. We're going to hear item number five. This is a non-contributing house. That's proposed for demolition, but. Ina. And Preservation Idaho are going to speak against the project, so we'll hear that. Item number six. Is proposed for consent, we haven't heard from the neighbors on that, that is an ADU, does not exceed the height of the. The house and meets all of our setbacks and other requirements.
Is there any commissioner wanting to hear item number six? Okay, great, let's put that on consent.
Okay. Item number seven is similar. Garage ADU does not exceed the height of the house. Otherwise meets our requirements.
Any commissioner wanting to hear that item? Great, let's put that on consent as well.
Item number eight is not an ADU, but it is a new garage with the constructing office space above, so that normally. Would not have likely come to the commission, but it is about six inches taller than the peak height of the house.
Six inches?
Yeah.
Okay. Any commission member wanting to hear item number eight? I personally don't have an issue with six inches, but.
I. I may want to hear it unless Ted, it's setbacks are also.
It's going to, they're building in the same footprint as the existing garage, so it's going to require a variance to the rear setback. If approved.
I mean, when, for exceeding the setbacks and exceeding the highest height of the house, I would prefer to hear it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So item number nine is the booth home property, the chapel being. Mostly demolished and rebuilt. For a couple of condominium units. Preservation Idaho sent a letter in opposed to the. Project, so we'll hear that. Item number 10. We will hear, we've received a lot of public testimony on that one. I just will mention that one, that this is the same property owner that removed the trees on the property to the north, and so a lot of the comments or some of the comments are referenced that, and you'll hear. Some of that referenced. That should not have any bearing on this project, it's a separate project, so. There are a lot of emotions tied up in that northern project, which is, so. We will hear this one, just kind of keep that in mind, we need to just kind of. Probably control the dialogue, you know, when it comes to if people start talking about the northern property.
Can I, can I do one of, well, I guess I can't because we're virtual, so never mind.
And then item number 11 is another one, the garage is, it's a one-story ranch house, the garage is about four feet taller than the house. That one here, or?
I would like to hear that.
I just, I really struggle with these one stories because I feel like what else are they supposed to do? You know what I mean? I wouldn't be opposed to that being on consent, or one stories in general, as long as it's within a certain threshold. Because I mean, what else are you supposed to do if you want to have an ADU in your backyard? And you have a one-story house, I mean, it's, it just seems a little bit bureaucratic to me, I think within a threshold, if it's. I don't know, whatever makes sense. I personally wouldn't be opposed to that, it's only four feet. On a, like, on a single, excuse me, on a single story, that just seems. Really fair. But. Are other commissioners wanting to hear that item?
I would like to hear it.
I'd also like to hear it.
Okay.
And I think we're done with the agenda.
Perfect.
So Mary can proceed, hopefully we left you on time, Mary.
Give me just a moment to get my camera and slideshow up, thank you. Just a moment, and I'm going to share my screen. And I know maybe not all of the commissioners were with us last time when we. Went through the first part of the training and we had gone through. The appeals and we were kind of starting into due process, but there were two HPC appeals that were before city council, so I thought it would be useful just to very briefly go back over. Sort of what we had discussed as far as appeals from the Historic Preservation Commission and kind of what some of their lifecycle is as they go through city council and hopefully provide some guidance to the commissioners. With regards to some of the decisions that you have before you. So just to real briefly recap, any change in a lower decision from the Historic Preservation Commission requires finding of error by the city council. We have the appeal criteria that's set out in our development code. For sake of time, I'm not going to read through all of those things, but essentially they do need to find that. One of those grounds for error exists for the city council to make a different decision from the commission. If they don't find one of those grounds for error, then the decision is upheld. When we're talking about appeals, you know, something to keep in mind is just the lifecycle of the application, so where I gave a little bit of guidance last time, that would be, for example. A variance for setbacks, for example, that if that's going to go through another process for entitlement to get the variance that. Historic Preservation Commission should ensure that the grounds and reasoned statement for their decision encompasses more than just that variation or the fact that they would have to get another form of entitlement approval. Tie it back to the criteria that's within the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission. Those guidelines, things of that nature as to, rather than, we're not going to grant this because. They would have to get a variance and they don't, we don't like it of explaining why that variance would not meet the guidelines or fit with the character of that neighborhood. So just as kind of an example. These are the two specific appeals that I just wanted to be able to kind of circle back with the Historic Preservation Commission on, they were both recent. And so just kind of giving sort of a view to the commissioners as far as what happens beyond the purview of this commission when decisions are made. So the two that were before council this last week, the first you may recall was. Solar panels, I'm sorry, I didn't specify that, but this is that DRH 21-72. These work for solar panels on a south-facing facade of a roof and. The commission found that because it was a facing, street-facing facade of the house that the commission had denied. The location of the solar panels or added a condition to its approval that solar panels could not be located on that particular side of the roof. On the appeal, the applicant stated that the basis for error was that the best place for exposure was that southern-facing portion of the roof. That the guidelines did not specify that solar panels would not be allowed on street-facing roof elevations. And ultimately, what the council decided is they looked at several of the guidelines, which albeit are loose regarding solar panels. But basically found that of the six or seven areas where there's some loose guidance on solar panels, that it met the criteria of roughly five or six of those guidelines. And did not meet the criteria of only one, which is the preference in the guidelines for it not to be on a facing, a primary-facing facade. And they did reverse Historic Preservation Commission. And what some of their findings were basically the. You know, that there was substantial evidence that supported that these solar panels should be approved. And specifically that they did not overwhelm the roofline that with the reorientation of the house, the primary-facing facade was actually on the east side and not the south side. That where there was evidence in the record that the, wasn't, there wasn't really another. Avenue on that roof for getting effective solar energy and solar collection. And that they were sufficiently setback from the eaves, in other words, they did not dominate. The roofline that these would sufficiently meet the guidelines. And so just kind of what I think the takeaway is from that, it's not just applicable to solar panels, but in terms of these guidelines. And kind of how they're used as basis for decisions. Is that there's not an expectation that these will, that every project will meet every guideline applicable. But that it is a matter of discretion and sort of weighing that evidence of how many of the guidelines do they meet, what are some of the objectives of the guidelines? And even where they may not meet all guidelines. Is this a project that's appropriate for approval? So kind of with that in mind, that may help inform some of the decisions when we're talking about. Elevations of a secondary building that may or may not. Increase the height above a primary structure of looking at all the evidence and looking at the guidelines in terms of which ones they may meet. Even if they may not necessarily meet every single guideline, that it is a guideline. With the goal to meet as many as possible, but understanding that that is not a requirement. The second one I wanted to briefly go over was DRH 20-543. This was an approval to construct a single-family residential home with a detached garage at one and a half stories, it was on a substandard lot. The bases for appeal. Were that it would unduly increase density, they didn't like the design, it did require a variance from a rear setback and it increased parking because. Where there had not been a house on that substandard lot, this home was going to be able to house six people and had two off-street parking. And in this one, the council did uphold the commission, and where they found is that the commission found that. You know, substandard lots, as long as they meet other requirements in code, may be utilized for permitted uses. And that the reasoned statement from Historic Preservation Commission in terms of addressing those was sufficient to uphold that appeal. So just kind of giving the commissioners some feedback in terms of making sure the reasoned statement is really tied to the criterion bases for decision-making. And where you've made a solid record and are able to sort of do that weighing of how many guidelines are met versus not what. Is in favor, what detracts and tying those to specific facts in the record that that really bolsters up the decision-making process. I'm going to now go to due process. And this is just talking kind of more specifically about procedure, hearing procedures, mostly as a reminder to the commissioners. There's both substantive due process and procedural due process, and the difference is substantive due process is a broader question of can the city regulate this? Do we have the statutory authority to even care what this particular landowner is doing or not? The procedural due process really is a minimal requirement of notice and opportunity to be heard. It is a constitutional guarantee that we are, that applicants are afforded. And it's kind of a loose concept because it's dependent on the context, right? So what notice and what opportunity to be heard is going to depend on the gravity of the application that. Or, you know, right that somebody is seeking to have enforced. Where it's applicable to the commissioners is sort of four key concepts. And so I'll go over each one of these, but this is with regards to ex parte communications, facts outside of the record, conflicts of interest and fairness and hearing procedures. So starting with ex parte communication, this is the dangling conversation, if you will. That when an applicant comes forward with an application, they are entitled to have a decision that is made, quote unquote, on the record. Where there are problems with ex parte communications is that. Some sort of substantive communication or information that has been shared about a pending matter. Between a party and somebody who is a member of that decision-making body. Outside of the presence of other interested parties. So essentially, everybody gets a seat at the table when the conversations are occurring. If you have had conversations or if there are other. Information that you have received outside the record, and we'll talk about how to disclose that here in just a moment. So. The problems is that on the record, we need correct and complete information, and so where there's ex parte communication, we have incomplete, incomplete information. The problem with due process is that if that applicant doesn't have prior notice of what is going to be in the record, they don't have the. Meaningful opportunity to rebut that information and give information that may outweigh or detract from what might be adverse to them. And again, it ensures that the decision is limited to the record, and that's also partly for purposes of the appeal process or their due process moving forward. Is that we need to be able to sort of wrap up that hearing. And transfer that to council, for example, and if there are. Things that were considered outside of that record, then the person who's reviewing that decision doesn't have an adequate basis to review whether or not the decision was substantive and was based on the appropriate criteria. So when there have been ex parte communications, and I'm going to also expand this too, this is. A little bit tied to facts outside the record, which will be the next subject. Is you need to disclose that on the record. Prior to the public hearing, so that the applicant has the opportunity to address the information. What the relationship is to that item. A summary of the contact and any documents that you have seen during the contact. It does not always cure it, but at least provides opportunity for the applicant to rebut it. So I'll give a very quick example, that would be. For example, if one of Commissioner Koski's neighbors called him up and was frustrated about. Some actions happening on a house next door to him. And in deliberations, that conversation comes up. That would be something that should be disclosed ahead of time. So that if the allegation of that neighbor is, well, they just tore out the whole roof of the garage, you know, that the applicant has the opportunity to come back and say. You know, the garage was removed XYZ or pursuant to this particular certificate of appropriateness, just the option and availability to address the allegations or that information. This is closely tied, but a little bit different in terms of facts outside the record, so. Ex parte communications really is somebody else approaching one of you as commissioners and providing additional information. Like I said, having those conversations and it's. And the facts outside the record is you may have independently received some information that weighs into your decision-making. So these are observations, other personal knowledge, if you have done some of your own research outside of what's provided in the staff report, things of that nature. Those would be facts outside of the record. It's very problematic when these new facts come into play in deliberation. Again, that is not providing the due process that we need to afford the applicant. And this personal knowledge or facts outside the record, you know, can be obtained in various different ways, so I'll give another example, if. Chair Montoto happens to drive by this particular location every day on her way to work. And so has knowledge of, you know, kids playing out in the parking lot every single day and. There's an adversity there to approve a project that would remove that open space, that is something that may weigh into her decision. But that's something that should be disclosed ahead of time on the record. So that it could be addressed as far as, well, what other open space are you providing for this particular? Project, and how would you address that neighborhood concern? So again, how to cure, this is early disclosure. Any comments that you've received, any observations that you've made, if you have searched on Google Maps and looked at older surveys of record that are not in. Our packet disclosing all those things ahead of time. And providing that opportunity to the applicant to rebut that information. So this is just sort of the summary, legal pointer, steer clear of new facts when you're in observation and observations during deliberations. If it is of a nature that is significant enough that is made during deliberations, that may be a time when either staff or council. Will ask the chair to reopen the public hearing to ensure that the applicant does have an appropriate opportunity to rebut. The next item is conflict of interest. This is defined in our city code, it doesn't come up a whole lot, there are two different types. One is the actual conflict of interest where some decision or some applicant that is application that is before you directly affects your financial interests or that of a member of your household. Or with an associated business. So for example, if you work and are employed by a company that is bringing forward the application or is in contract with the applicant to provide some work, and that is a financial benefit. To your employer, that would be a conflict of interest where you need to recuse yourself from that decision. An apparent conflict of interest may not affect your financial interests, but calls into question objectivity and independence, so. Say your best friend is the owner of a consulting business, that is the one that provided support for a particular application. You don't have a financial interest, but if you had discussed that with your best friend or, you know, there is a closeness there. It may be something you need to disclose on the record and recuse yourself and or provide. The basis by which you think your judgment is not impaired and just sort of outlining that and disclosing on the record. And again, this is just to make sure that there's not a basis for error. That they can't, the applicant then with that disclosure has far less bases to say that you were biased in your decision-making where there were some reason that you could not make a reasoned decision on their particular application. You can always recuse yourself from a vote, it does not affect our quorum. And also just this exception is if you happen to receive a gift card, for example, from a company that is doing. You know, has an interest in one of these applications, having received that gift card is a de minimis interest, that's not going to be a conflict. If you just disclose that that has occurred on the record, you should be fine and not have to recuse. And with these conflicts of interest, we have had commissioners, and I'm going to just say a prophylactic thank you. And with these conflicts of interest, we have had commissioners and I'm going to just say a prophylactic thank you to all of you that when you do contact us and let us know of what you anticipate maybe a conflict ahead of time. It's very helpful for us to be able to address that prior to the meeting and we appreciate that you are on the side of caution in asking those questions ahead of time. The last thing I wanted to cover very briefly and hopefully still give you all a five minute break or so is fairness and hearing procedures. This is ensuring kind of going back to what the purview and the basis for decisions and criteria are in front of the historic preservation commission is stick to that code. Make sure that you're making decisions on a basis that is within the purview of the HPC to to review and deliberate on. In this opportunity to rebut new information, that's where I talk about how if if there is facts that are disclosed from outside the record at a time after the applicant has has provided their evidence in support of an application that staff and or counsel may ask to reopen hearing. Every now and again, also in terms of fairness and procedures, we get documents that are offered during the hearing. Anytime somebody is having like has a PowerPoint presentation or they have a one page document that they have not provided in late correspondence or in a hearing packet. The commission does have discretion whether or not to accept that as part of the record or not. Generally, if it's a short document, shouldn't be an issue because it's something that can be fairly quickly reviewed. If somebody comes in and offers a 25 page packet in support of their application, the historic preservation commission has the option to accept sort of a one page summary or a brief summary of that. And if you want to be able to review the entire packet and include all of that information on the record, you can either, you know, you can reject that information entirely, you can take a break in and review it during the hearing. You can recess or you can defer depending on how extensive that additional information is. I just wanted to remind the commission, you do have some of that discretion as far as, you know, somebody bringing something into the hearing specifically. And let me see my computer sleeping. Okay, and then just to close out real briefly, helping to remind and define what are the role of legal counsel is and how we're here to help support you all. At the meetings, we're really here to ensure that due process, that fairness and procedures ensure we can minimize ex parte communications, facts outside the record, that sort of a thing, how to frame motions, what the procedure is. In terms of substantive questions and legality, that is more appropriate for outside of a meeting and something that the commissioners are welcome to send through Ted to us ahead of time. The reason being is that sometimes everything is not black and white and we would like to have some ask as far as what particular concerns there are and have adequate time to be able to provide some interpretation or guidelines in terms of what our legal opinion is on that particular substantive topic. We are not a super department. We're not the ultimate decision makers. So sometimes our discretion or our interpretation may say, well, it's a maybe. Commissioners, you have discretion. Here's sort of our shoreboards and really it is the purview of staff and the commissioners to determine what interpretation they want to support and go forward with. And but we are happy to answer and give guidance on any of those substantive questions. It's just much easier to do that off the record and with a little more time for review. Very black and white questions, those we can probably do on the record, so. Just a how to do that, I guess, contacted us in advance if you have any concerns. Happy to provide a memorandum or discussion with you. We are again in constant communication with Ted. So if there are complex issues with no clear answer, we we do want to be able to give you some guidance and framework for how to make that decision. And when in doubt on any kind of interpretation of statute or to what extent, for example, historic guidelines should apply, the best thing you can do is develop that record. Really support the decision and basis for which direction the commission is deciding to go. And then with attorney client privilege, if there are sideline questions as far as procedure, how we do X, Y, or Z, what do we do here? If you send us a chat in the Zoom on the Zoom function where they're available for that, those are things that do not have to be disclosed to the public. If we send you a memorandum in advance on a basis of a question or kind of giving a heads up about a particular topic that may come up, that is also attorney client privileged. You don't have to disclose that. If you do, that looks at a waiver of that attorney client privilege. And really, historic preservation commission is vested with authority to make this decision. So you do not need to rest your decisions on invoking attorney advice. They really stand on their own. And that's again where it comes to developing the record. So instead of saying, well, my attorney advised or our legal department thinks that XYZ is the right interpretation, commissioners might start with, my interpretation is I conclude that we find based on the record XYZ. Rather than sort of that hedging lead in of needing to rely on counsel. And that is what I have for right now. If you have any questions, like to give you guys a little bit of a break, but can ask anything right this moment, or you can follow up with me on an email via Ted.
Thank you, Mary. And with that, we'll go ahead and call the work session and we'll take a quick little break before we get started at six. Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is the 24th of May, 2021. This is the scheduled time and place for the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. I am Chairperson Montoto and I now call the meeting to order. Victoria, would you please call the roll?
Rupp?
Here.
Koski?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Pape?
Here.
Montoto?
Here.
Six present, two absent.
Thank you. Have all commission members had a chance to review the minutes from the April 26, 2021 meeting? Does anyone have any comments or changes to make to the minutes? Hearing none, I will now take a motion on the April 26, 2021 minutes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Weaver?
I move that we approve the the minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Victoria, would you please call the roll?
Rupp?
I.
Koski?
Since I wasn't here, I'm going to not vote. Can I do that? Okay.
Weaver? I.
Brown?
I.
Pape?
I was not here either.
Okay, Montoto?
I.
Motion carries for in favor.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Ted for a virtual introduction.
Good evening and welcome to the Boise City Historic Preservation Commission meeting. A few things to start out with for tonight's proceedings. Everyone from the public entering the hearing has been automatically muted and cannot speak. As the item you are interested in comes up for discussion, you will be called upon and unmuted. You'll be promoted to panelist and we'll rejoin the meeting after a slight delay. There is a chat function in Zoom. This is not part of the record and should only be used if technical difficulties arise. If the chat function isn't available, you can email zoning info at cityofboise.org with any technical issues. Our procedures for public hearings begin with a presentation from the planning team. Then we'll go to the applicant and then the representative of the Registered Neighborhood Association, followed by questions from the commission. After that, we proceed to public testimony, starting with those who signed up on the online signup sheet in advance and then everyone else who raises their hand virtually. If you are, excuse me, if you are attending through your telephone, you can type star nine to raise your hand. Each member of the public is allowed up to three minutes for testimony. We are strict with this time as it is limited in city code. Finally, the applicant is allowed five minutes for rebuttal, after which the hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate and render a decision. Tonight's agenda and proceedings will be almost the same as in person hearings, except we might have a bit of delay as we work through the technology. Please be courteous and patient with us while we venture through this virtual format. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ted. We'll begin tonight with our consent agenda and we have five possible items for consent, beginning with item number two, DRH 21-00130. Quinn Rogers at 1607 North 14th Street. This is discussion and ratification of findings for approval. Does the commission have any questions on this matter? Great. This item, DRH 21-00130 will be placed on the consent agenda. The next item on our consent agenda is item number three, DRH 21-00128, Steve Trout at 2315 North 20th Street. Does the commission have any questions on this matter? Is the applicant present?
Yes, I'm here. Eamon Parker representing Trout Architects.
Wonderful. Are you in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval?
Largely in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval, including moving moving the new garage ADU one foot south. The only question that I have is about a memo from comprehensive planning and zoning about adding sidewalks on Brenneman Street. And I wasn't sure if that was a condition of approval or if that was a recommendation by the planning and zoning department.
Madam Chair, that's not a condition of approval. It's just comments incorporated from our from our comprehensive planning group.
Wonderful. Mr. Trout, did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And if that's the case, then we would be in agreement with all the conditions of approval.
Fantastic. Ted, was there any written opposition to this matter?
Madam Chair, there was not.
Is there anyone present tonight wishing to testify against this matter? Seeing none and based on the representation of the applicant and lack of opposition, item DRH 21-00128 will be placed on the consent agenda. Our next item for consent is item number six, DRH 21-00174, Mark Terseif at 2103 North 9th Street. Does the commission have any questions on this matter? Is the applicant present?
Hi there. This is Amy Goodrich. I'm the property owner. So Mark Terseif is the architect and he's not present, but I am.
Are you in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Ted, was there any written opposition to this matter?
Madam Chair, no.
Is there anyone present tonight wishing to testify against this matter? Seeing none and based on the representation of the applicant and lack of opposition, item DRH 21-00174 will be placed on the consent agenda. Next, we have item number seven, DRH 21-00179, Catherine Sewell at 1118 North 17th Street. Does the commission have any questions on this matter? Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval?
Yes.
Wonderful. Ted, was there any written opposition to this matter?
There was not.
Is there anyone present tonight wishing to testify against this matter? Seeing none and based on the representation of the applicant and lack of opposition, item DRH 21-00179 will be placed on the consent agenda. And finally, item number eight, DRH 21-00180, Steve Trout with 1810 West Limp Street. Does the commission have any questions on this matter? Is the applicant present?
Yes, Sean Weston with Trout Architects.
Are you in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. Ted, was there any written opposition to this? Ted, was there any written opposition to this matter?
There was not.
Is there anyone present tonight wishing to testify against this matter? Seeing none, and based on the representation of the applicant and lack of opposition, item DRH two-one-dash-zero-zero-one-eight-zero will be placed on the consent agenda. I move that the consent agenda and all items on the consent agenda be approved, subject to all the findings and conclusions and conditions of approval agreed upon for each application. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Victoria, would you please call the roll?
Rupp?
Aye.
Koski?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Pape?
Aye.
Montoto?
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Um, if there were any applicants here for items on the consent agenda, your items have been approved and you are free to go unless you would like to stay and hear the other matters. We will now move to the remaining items on the agenda this evening. And the first item to be heard is item number one, DRH two-one-dash-zero-zero-one-zero-nine. Ogata Construction at fourteen oh two North Twenty-Fourth Street. Ted, can we please have the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, is my slide? There it is. So, the item, the first item before you tonight is an appeal of an administrative approval for certificate of appropriateness to demolish an existing detached garage and to construct a detached garage and to also replace and change some of the windows on the house. This is in the Expanded North End Historic District. The house is considered contributing. This is an aerial of the house, so it fronts Twenty-Fourth Street and then has a south side elevation off of Limp. Main structure, and then the garage, the detached, existing detached garage is in this location. These are a couple of photos of the house. House and garage. And this is a proposed site plan showing, it's actually showing the existing garage as well as where the new garage would be located. So, again, the house located here, this is actually a pool, an existing pool in this area. So, the garage that is currently located here will be demolished. The new garage will be located further back on the property here, where my cursor is. The proposal meets all setbacks except for this rear setback. So, the existing garage is about five feet from that rear setback. I'll go back to the aerial. So, the existing garage is roughly five feet back from here. The new garage would be up in this location, same rear setback as well. The side setback would still be five feet and meet code requirements. So, again, this garage going away, new garage will be put back here in the corner area. These are the elevations showing existing and proposed. So, the new garage that will be set back further on the property, it's not much bigger than the, than the existing garage. It's about, you know, it's a two-car garage with some lofts, a little bit of loft or storage space above. Another angle. So, the grounds for appeal from the appellant, and I'll go through these. Existing parking on the property is adequate, so a new garage is not needed and would degrade the historic district property. You know, staff doesn't agree with this ground for appeal. We don't usually review replacement of garages based on us or somebody thinking that their existing parking is adequate, so they don't need a new garage. We review the new garages based on site location, design, how well it suits the property and fits on the property. So, in this case, that's not really something we go into. We don't, when we're looking at a garage, we don't, we don't question whether you actually need a new garage or not. It's just, what are you doing? What is the design and is it appropriate for the property? Existing violation of a setback does not create further entitlement. Well, that's true. So, once they demo, if they're approved to demo this existing garage, they'll cite the new garage in their proposed site location. They're still requesting a five-foot rear setback where fifteen is required, so they'll still be required to go through a variance process to get approval for that rear setback. Ground for appeal number three, reasonable application of city and Secretary of Interior guidelines. You know, in, in these cases, we review them against our guidelines as well as the Secretary of Interior standards, which are kind of embedded into our guidelines. The existing garage was constructed, I believe, in the seventies. It's a, a smallish two-car garage. And so, the, the new one-car garage or the new two-car garage or proposed two-car garage largely meets our guidelines. It's a pretty simple structure. The location of the garage is actually an improvement to the site because it actually puts the parking further back on the site away from the street, which is preferred. Consistency and lot coverage calculations. We do review lot coverage calculations on these. Again, this one, it's a fairly large lot, so lot coverage wasn't really a huge factor in this one. Not to mention the new garage is not a whole lot bigger than the existing garage. So, lot coverage only, it went up from roughly nineteen to, I think, twenty percent on this one. So, still well below lot coverage maximums recommended in the guidelines. Predictability of future usage of the new structure as an ADU. This, you know, we, we can't tell somebody what their future use of the structure can be. So, in the future, if the applicant decided to come back and add a second story to that garage or construct an ADU, that's something they're perfectly entitled to do by city code and, and actually encouraged by the city as ADUs are encouraged to help alleviate the housing crunch. So, due to no errors being identified in the administrative approval, staff does recommend denial of the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions for Ted? Okay. Is the applicant present? The... Oh, I'm sorry. Is the appellant present? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Give us a moment to get set up on the...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I apologize. My script is not typically suited to appeals, so I was just reading off of it.
I'm missing to take a mask off, please.
You may.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, and you have twenty minutes.
I'm the appellant, David Klinger. I live at fourteen oh four North Twenty-Fourth Street. I'm one of two adjacent contiguous neighbors to the project site at fourteen oh two North Twenty-Fourth Street. And like you and members of the commission, I'm a volunteer too. I serve on the Historic Preservation Committee of the North End Neighborhood Association. I've also served Nina for the past five years in the ongoing redevelopment of the Booth Home Hospital property, also on Twenty-Fourth Street, about which we're gonna hear more later tonight in a separate item. To avoid any possible conflict of interest, I have recused myself from any deliberation by Nina on this project. Should Nina take any position or take no position, it has been without my participation or involvement. I've been told by Mr. Vinagis I have up to thirty minutes for this appeal. I won't take that. I know you have a full agenda tonight. I will speak for about twenty-one minutes to respect your time. And there's really nothing personal in my testimony tonight. This is just business. But if I don't assert my own interests or be a witness to what is happening in our historic district and in our historic neighborhood, just who will speak for that? The application may seem like one more routine demolition and rebuild. It typifies the frantic pace of conversion in the disappearing North End Historic District today. Your agenda tonight is filled with almost a dozen historic district alterations. This project merits, merits just a little more scrutiny. Hopefully, a more sensitive project may result, and I want to help to achieve that outcome. This application states this is simply administrative approval to demolish an existing non-contributing detached one-car garage to construct a new non-contributing detached two-car garage, requiring a variance, to encroach on the fifteen-foot setback requirement and then to replace and change out windows on the house. I'm going to confine myself primarily to the garage situation, not the proposed house remodel. I will note for the record that the applicant and builder now represent the interior remodel as something far greater than was first suggested to neighbors. It now involves a whole-house remodel, taking the interior walls down to the studs on all three levels and vacating the house for an estimated six to nine months while reconstruction occurs. This application has had its share of procedural irregularities. A building permit was issued before any certificate of appropriateness was submitted. Neighbors were asked to sign their statements of approval with no reference to the legal requirement for a needed variance. The building permit had to be canceled and reissued, amended approval statements by neighbors, redrafted and signed once again. I think we need full and consistent disclosure on everything that is proposed on this project. Ogata Construction's March eighth Letter of Explanation, which is in your file, that was sent to the city, now does acknowledge that, that this indeed is a whole-house remodel and not just minor window changes. It now confirms that the existing garage structure is not a one-car garage, but the larger one-and-a-half-car structure. Amazingly, it characterizes a two-car structure as, quote, "more historically appropriate", end quote, for the historic district. I just don't get that. Demolition of a one-and-a-half-car, non-contributing garage and its replacement with a historically irrelevant two-car, non-contributing garage somehow complements our history, requiring a variance, pushing the new structure up against two contiguous lots, placing a heavily paved rear yard under even greater non-permeable cover, offering neighbors no assurance that any new garage won't one day reemerge as a second living structure, further impacting adjacent contiguous properties. To assert that this is historical enhancement, I find a total misread of the purpose and character of a historic district by a respected local construction firm that should know better. This is much pain for a half a car width of gain. Let's examine five aspects in greater detail. Historical appropriateness, parking, lot coverage, lot setbacks, future assurances. This is the existing garage. Previous building permits indicate it was built in nineteen seventy-seven following demolition of another previous garage. It's aesthetically complimentary to the house, as you can see. It has recently been freshly painted and re-roofed. I have been inside it. It's heated, it's structurally sound, with decades of potential usefulness ahead of it. First, this begs one obvious question. Why isn't a structure's condition and character at least a small part of your criteria in your decision-making? All garages are not created equal. Some north-end garages are in poor repair, falling apart, potential fire or safety hazards. This is not one of them. Yet, within our historic district, demolition consigning yet one more structure to the landfill in this so-called green city of ours appears to be the starting point for any proposal. Well, here's one structure that wasn't thrown away. It's an extended house in Maine, state of Maine. This is my reference point. I have spent a lot of my life in Maine. Maine is full of such classic historical structures. They're beloved, prized as very historic, adding to the integrity and cohesiveness of established neighborhoods. Typically, an owner would build a house, then would attach a kitchen to the rear, then add a breezeway, then tie on his garage and possibly even tie on his barn. Why would he do that? Interconnectedness sure beats struggling through deep snow in a Maine winter. So, what does this have to do with this application? Seemingly not very much, except one thing, that history takes many forms, that one standard can vary from one historic neighborhood to another, and that tearing down in a historic district should be regarded as a last resort and not the automatic default position. I know you respect city and Secretary of the Interior Historic Preservation Guidelines. I worked for the Secretary of the Interior for thirty-five years, and I'm familiar with these suggested standards. I do understand that attachment of a non-contributing garage to a contributing house is discouraged. But guidelines are just that, guidelines. When strict adherence to guidelines causes a cascading series of subsequent impacts, eventually requiring the granting of a variance and overruling a codified city regulation, well, then maybe there's a gentler way before we start swinging the wrecking ball and remaking a property. Here's how your commission, some years ago, skillfully approached the need for onsite parking on another premier Boise historic street, twelve thirteen Harrison Boulevard. This tied-on garage complements the historic home and respects the historic district with creativity and imagination, not removal and relocation. Couldn't we have done that here? To get an extra half-car width of space, couldn't we have captured the existing four or five feet of breezeway space to the left of the current garage? Couldn't we have simply widened the existing garage door and gained a few more feet on the right? A remodel, modification, or replacement of existing garage on the same footprint with, or maybe without, a tie-on to the house might have been all that's needed. It certainly wouldn't have required another larger structure to be pushed back against adjacent lots, crowding an over, an already overcrowded backyard, requiring a variance from the law. I might have supported a project that put two or three alternative designs before you for consideration. Now, while you're thinking about that, think about this. Applicant asserts in his filings an assumed right to an enclosed and covered two-car garage. His attorney asserts that two-car off-street parking is, quote, "generally required". I maintain that no such guarantee exists within city code or statute, especially in a prized historic district. Indeed, any, quote, "guarantee" of a multi-car garage in a historic district threatens the very historical appropriateness the builder professes as his goal in his earlier statement to you in the record. There is adequate parking on the property. There currently is the one-and-a-half-car garage structure capable of being enlarged or modified. There's the paved driveway permitting off-street parking. Creative use of an existing side shoulder along that same driveway could yield additional space and vehicle clearance. And yes, there's always Twenty-Fourth Street for occasional overflow parking, which is one of the widest streets in the North End. We live in the oldest neighborhood in Boise. Before choosing to live here, we acknowledge certain constraints and limitations in this city's oldest section. Maximizing the number of cars and sizes of garages on a property does not make things, quote, "more historically appropriate." Our North End lots are really not as big as they seem. Not included in your agenda packet or in the public record is the applicant's own property survey of July twenty-second, twenty-twenty by Fox Land Survey. It revealed that designated street rights-of-way extend farther up on both of our properties than we first realized, on both North Twenty-Fourth and, in the case of the applicant, also along West Lemp. We're not talking about the standard easement strip along the street where the city trees grow. We're not talking about the public sidewalk. We're talking about large swaths of our front and side yards that we don't own and that give us a misleading or false sense of the expansiveness of our properties. We water the lawn, we cut the grass in our front yards, but we don't own it. And now, why is this important? You calculate lot coverage in a historic district based on lot size. The smaller the lot, the more impactful the allowable lot coverage can become. I'm not suggesting any error on the part of the applicant or his lawyer in what they say is the overall size of the lot. I simply suggest that this survey, his survey, should have been included, that we don't own as much of these properties as we once thought should have been highlighted. From my own personal experience, I have found Ada County assessor's records to be inaccurate on my own property, requiring correction. It's always prudent to reconfirm measurements, recalculate the numbers, and be certain we are consistent in our conclusions based on the results of the most accurate and recent lot survey. Now, this does raise the larger issue of allowable lot coverage in a designated historic district. Current calculations state that about eighteen percent of this lot is covered now. The proposed new garage, that's forty-five percent larger than the old one in square footage, requiring setbacks and a variance and a longer driveway, would boost the lot coverage to twenty percent. Sounds reasonable, as measured against the thirty percent coverage rule that the applicant's attorney cites, although I believe the city has once again liberalized the lot coverage allowance to an even more generous thirty-five percent. As we boost that allowance to squeeze more and more stuff into less and less space in Boise's most dense neighborhood, I think the average Boisian would be shocked to learn just how narrow the city's definition of lot coverage has become. To a reasonable person, lot coverage is, well, it's coverage. More rooftops, more impermeable concrete, less vegetation equates to more coverage. This city's definition of coverage on a lot is limited to three things: the footprint of a house, the footprint of a garage, and the footprint of a patio, but only if the patio has a roof over it. It doesn't include walkways, driveways, porches, open-air paved patios, decks, or expansive in-ground swimming pools. The city treats in-ground pools as structures needing designated setbacks and clearances when they're built, but when it comes to adding up lot coverage, they aren't added in, they aren't considered structures. That's curious. If you logically included all of these coverage items contributing to coverage of the rear and front lots, the coverage on this property would approach thirty-three percent, which is perilously close to the limit. I want you to see a clear aerial photograph, and not just a sketch, of just how paved over this backyard has become and just how little green remains. A larger, wider, and taller garage structure and an extended driveway to service it only worsens the coverage. Does what goes on in the back of a lot have implications for the historical integrity of a property in a historic district? I think it does. And it's going to take a variance to get it. That's a matter that planning and zoning must address, but it can be part of your considerations here tonight. In this case, maybe we just have the cart before the horse. Typically, variances are granted only in extraordinary or hardship situations based on natural conditions of the lot and not man-made conditions that have been artificially created. Does the desire for an extra half-car width of enclosed parking space constitute such a hardship? The proposed action sets in motion a cascading series of impacts. And like a catch-22, foregoing a variance, shifting the structure even farther to the west to avoid P&amp;Z review would only aggravate the crowding from my perspective as a neighbor. Prior owners of this property intentionally made it crowded and hemmed in. It is getting maxed out. I sympathize with the current owner, who bought it knowing the constraints, its location within a historic district, and the difficulties he would face. If there are more intelligent and gentler alternatives, we shouldn't make it more crowded. Finally, what will any new garage eventually become? This will make the third garage in this property's history. Applicant's attorney asserts that future usage is irrelevant to your analysis, that any attempt to ascertain what this new expanded garage might become is not even worth thinking about. I disagree. Past promises and assurances have a way of becoming forgotten. In our historic district, one-car garages now have a very curious way of morphing into multi-car structures and then into accessory dwelling units or Airbnbs. Development creep is being pursued frantically at the expense of livability, neighborhood stability, and the integrity of a historic district. This should concern a Historic Preservation Commission. Is it irrelevant? Maybe to a hired lawyer who doesn't live next door. But when you live under the glare and gaze of an expansive two-story home fourteen feet from a swimming pool, the addition of yet another structure on your perimeter, throwing more shade, shadow, and claustrophobia on your own backyard, is very relevant. Shouldn't we think beyond the now and at least consider some future implications? Well, I have. I've recorded a binding encumbrance on my own deed, committing to no new living structures, no new second homes, no money-making Airbnbs on my property. That's my commitment to my good neighbors and to my historic district, a greater measure of certainty and a climate of frantic development. What exists today on my property will be what my neighbors can expect tomorrow and in perpetuity. No more creeping redevelopment in a historic neighborhood that we cherish, if I can have anything to say about it. If we're determined to follow this path tonight, an approval of this project, I suggest a similar binding deed encumbrance. Committing any new garage to the purpose you've been asked to sanction would be a demonstration, a small demonstration of sincerity, good faith, and just simple good neighborliness. So in summary, does another demolition and an expanded and relocated garage create a more historically appropriate property? Were alternatives even considered? Is there a severe parking deficiency unable to be remedied any other way? Are lot coverage calculations transparent and reflective of an already crowded property, which is paved over in the backyard and diminished in the front by newly discovered ownership by someone else? Is there a hardship so great that it justifies violation of a rear setback and the need to grant a variance? And finally, how does any structure that's permitted remain a garage and not just one more step toward continued degradation of historic appropriateness that this project says it's giving us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. Are there any questions from the commission for Mr. Klinger? Okay, thank you so much.
And we will handle further elaboration and rebuttal, is that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Wonderful. If you'll please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Danny with Ogata Construction.
Hi.
So that was a lot of big themes. I'm going to circle back to just this application specifically. I guess I'll just summarize to get this over with quickly, that we do agree with the staff report. We think it's an appropriate, modest project, and it does have, with the exception of the appellant, does have kind of universal approval from the neighborhood. I think there's support letters, including from the neighbor to the rear, who's is currently being encroached on that rear setback. We wish to maintain the same setback there in support of the project. They wrote a letter saying they're in support of the project. I think I'm just gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that, if that's okay with you, if there's any questions.
Absolutely. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I ask a legal question? Do I need to ask for public testimony on an appeal?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, yes, we do allow a public hearing.
Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Association as well? Wonderful, perfect. Is the Registered Neighborhood Association here to testify? Doesn't look like it. Is there anyone in the public this evening wishing to testify on this appeal? Looks like we have someone online. Wonderful. Hi there. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Grant Beebe, two-three-one-six West Lemp Street. I am the neighbor directly to the east of the property in the rear setback. As the representative from Ogata said, we're a hundred percent in favor of this project. I have no issue with it, even though it continues to encroach on the setback. And I don't know, just to note that we've done probably five remodels in the thirty years we've lived in this house, and thank goodness we could, so we could raise our kids. And I'll note that in the aerial photos you saw, both Mr. Klinger and us have two-car garages that we've been allowed to build over the years, so, you know, I think it's part of keeping North End livable. So appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thanks much.
Thank you, Mr. Beebe. Are there any other members of the public wishing to testify this evening? Okay, Mr. Klinger, if you would like five minutes for your rebuttal. I asked if they were available. It doesn't seem like they're on the line. So if you'd like your five minutes, please come forward.
Again, David Klinger, fourteen oh-four North Twenty-Fourth Street. I would correct the last item. My garage, I know that my situation is not the item under consideration. It's a fifteen-foot opening. I guess you could squeeze two cars in there if you sucked it up. I didn't build it. It was a previous owner, so it was the status quo when I purchased the property. That was not my project. In his written statement, the applicant's attorney characterized me as an outlier. It's in your file. I didn't really know what that meant, and so I looked it up. It means someone who lives outside the norm or outside an affected area. Well, that's certainly not true. But I will acknowledge another label. I'm one of those newcomers. I've only been coming to Boise on business since the early nineteen-nineties, thirty years ago. And when I bought my North End home a decade ago, the first question I asked myself was very simple: how do I fit in? How do I best respect and enhance the historic rules and norms of my new neighborhood? Not how much I can extract from my property through continual additions and remodels, not how much I can take from my property, how much I can commoditize from the property, but how much can I give back to a neighborhood and a historic district? If I needed a residence that maximized every modern amenity, there were plenty of other neighborhoods around Boise to find that elsewhere. I believed I had a contract with this place to support and sustain its character and to enhance its heritage. That's your concern as a Historic Preservation Commission. I believe that my short-term needs should be balanced by the needs and good of the larger community and neighborhood. And I know that sounds old-fashioned or corny, but that's what I believe. When you move to a historic place, you knowingly accept certain limitations and constraints. That's the admission price for living in a unique and prized neighborhood. In my own house, I don't have a true master bedroom. My two upstairs bedrooms are ten and twelve feet square. I can barely even make my own bed. You don't even want to know about my closet space. I could have bumped my little nineteen thirty-five North End cottage out to the rear, covered more of my yard and gardens with a larger house footprint, created a master bedroom, and then cut my neighbors to the north off from light, breeze, and breathing room. But I didn't do that. I held up. It just wasn't appropriate. I chose not to do it out of respect for others and my historic neighborhood. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. I really don't envy you your jobs, commissioners, as volunteers on Boise's Historic Preservation Commission. I think you're presiding over the hard job of witnessing the slow death of this city's premier neighborhood and historic district in this hyper-development atmosphere we're currently living in. Every month, your agendas are packed with applications from people who profess to love this place and then who immediately want to remake it to suit their own immediate desires. Most every scrap of land is being built on, every existing house raised up, bumped out, added on, every alleyway outbuilding turned into a profit-generating ADU to squeeze more and more out of smaller and smaller spaces. Thank God, during a pandemic, I at least had my remaining backyard patch of green where I could breathe. After all this ends, what will we be left with, commissioners? A historic community or just a collection of cluttered properties behind the curtain with a facade of history on their fronts, a movie-set version of history? It's the applicant's prerogative to emphasize the "me." It's your commission's responsibility to consider the "we." Piece by piece, project by project, variance by variance, it is possible to kill a historic district without realizing or acknowledging that we're doing it. Death by a thousand paper cuts. We need to find a better way. This particular project would be a good place to start. I'm committed to helping. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you so much. With that, I will close the public portion of the hearing and will consider a motion or discussion.
Madam Chair, I'll get started.
Sure, please.
Mr. Klinger had a lot to say, and I thought many-
Mr. Klinger had a lot to say, and I thought many of the things he mentioned were, were right on the money. There's a reason, there's a reason I'm I'm a volunteer commissioner for the city of Boise, and a lot of it is, is because of stuff that Mr. Klinger spoke to. I also know that the reason we're here as commissioners is to support and go by the guidelines that are written. And our design guidelines, it's like they were adopted in August of 2013, and they were written by our city council. We are charged as commissioners and Historic Commission to support the guidelines that the city council has put in front of us. In the case of the guidelines for this, this item, DRH 21-00109, I believe that staff, I didn't see any errors in their decision. And in our standards of reviews for appeals, 11-03-03.09, it does state if no errors are found, the appeal should be denied and decision upheld. I would like first to state that if this does get denied, that I would encourage Mr. Klinger's enthusiasm and convictions. I would, I would encourage him to continue that with possibly getting in front of the city council or some of, some of, ask for appointments, an appointment to be, to be heard in that respect, because they are the ones who are, who are creating these guidelines for us to go by. So with that, I would like to move for DRH 21-00109 that we deny the appeal.
Thank you. Is there a second or additional discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Weaver. Is there any additional comments before I have Victoria call the roll? Okay, Victoria, will you please call the roll?
Rob?
Hi.
Koski?
Hi.
Weaver?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Pape?
Hi.
Montoto?
Hi.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item we have on our agenda this evening is item number four, DRH 21-00140, Jim Kale at, or Kaye, excuse me, at 2003 West Ellis Street. Ted, can we please have the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is a request to replace siding and windows on a contributing single-family structure. The property is located in the expanded North End Historic District. And it is a contributing structure. So this is, I think, the first of these kind of applications that are coming before you. We typically review siding changes. Even on contributing houses, we've traditionally done that at a staff level, but you know, after some meetings with various groups, neighborhood groups, one thing that they did want to change was to have more, you know, visibility into these kind of changes on contributing houses. So we, we agreed that, that these should come to the commission. And so this is, this is the, the first one I think that we've brought for one of these changes. So the property is in the expanded North End on Ellis. This is a photo from the survey of the contributing house. These are photos provided by the applicant of the siding throughout the house. The state of siding. The applicant also has claimed that this is not the original siding on the house. So, and it doesn't appear that the original siding is, is beneath this, this siding. So I think we're unclear of what, what the original siding was. This does appear to be, you know, older wood siding. And then the windows are being replaced with metal-clad wood windows. And it appears all the windows are being replaced. There, of course, is a condition of approval. Any windows on a contributing house in the visible areas of the house have to remain as the original style of window. So the applicant claims the existing wood siding is not original and is in an overall state of disrepair and needs to be replaced. The new siding will be fibrous cement that appears to match what is on there now. Existing windows are wood will be replaced with metal-clad wood. The windows are being replaced with more energy-efficient windows. Again, on the visible areas of the house, the new windows will need to match in style the existing or original windows. So with that, I'll stand for questions, or the applicant also will have more information on the siding as well.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ted. Why don't we go ahead and hold questions, have the applicant present, and then we'll have questions open for both, just for the sake of time. Is the applicant present? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have 20 minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jim Colley. I'm with Amazing Exteriors here in Boise. We are representing the owner of this home. And they are here, I believe, on, online, and so they would be available for questions as well. What we've attempted to do is work with the owner, understanding the guidelines that are established for historic homes. We have matched the siding as close as we can, realizing that it is in bad decay and deteriorating. And, and so what we've tried to do is, is copy or at least, you know, get the general design of the siding, the same lap siding that, that is existing. The windows, similarly, we are mimicking the design of all of the windows, not only the windows on the front elevation, but all the windows all the way around. And they are a similar design, so we feel very comfortable with our aluminum clad line of replacing the windows. And so we really think that we're doing great improvements to the home and are following the guidelines of the historic agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know if the owners would like to speak?
Yeah, Will Foster, I am the owner of the property, and the exterior is in a state of disrepair. And what, we appreciate the historical significance of the house and want to keep the character of it, but we also see that there's a need for new siding on it. It's just it in really bad shape, and the windows are in bad shape. So we want to, we want to do what's right, both historically and for the house to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Are there any questions for the applicant or for Ted?
Madam Chair, I have a question for the applicant, Mr. Colley. You mentioned you, you would like to keep, you're proposing to keep the siding similar. And it appears in the pictures that it's a five-and-a-half-inch shiplap or a better, a better maybe definition would be it's you're basically a two or two-and-a-half-inch clapboard is actually what it is. So you're proposing going to a five-and-a-quarter-inch lap siding versus a two-and-a-half-inch or two-inch clapboard that's there. How do you, how do you consider that to be replacing with a similar style?
Well, what you need to understand is the lap siding that we are proposing to use has an inch-and-a-quarter lap on the actual siding itself. So the reveal, as we call it, would be closer to a four-inch lap siding, and that is the very minimum that James Hardy makes in a lap siding. So we feel like we, we've, you know, gotten very close, but you know, obviously not right on, on the point, but you know, it's the best we can do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown, did I see you have a question?
Yes, I have a question for Ted. So in your conditions of approval, Ted, that you say it'll be the same style of window. Is that the configuration, like a three over one, a five over one, or is that something else that you are intending?
The intent was that it matched exactly in style. You know, the grid pattern, everything. That's typically what we do with contributing houses where they're replacing windows, at least on the visible areas of the house. If it's the original window that's in their original style of window, it needs to match. You know, if it's single-hung, double-hung, or whatever grid pattern is on there, that's the intent to that.
Okay, and is that explained to the applicant precisely? Because I think that could be a little bit misconstrued by somebody, a silly person, doesn't know historic building materials.
Okay.
I have a question for the applicant. Was at, in any case, was wood considered for the siding versus the Hardy board?
Not for very long. I mean, James Hardy siding is, is, you know, just a better product. You know, if you're replacing the siding and, and it's not original to the home, we felt like, you know, we're, we're trying to live to the, to the guidelines that have been established, but using a, a product that you don't have to worry about, you know, in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ted or the applicant? Oh, sure.
Madam Chair, I have some more questions for the applicant.
Please.
Please. Thank you, Jim. Obviously, it's an older home and painting wood is, is, is something that needs to be upkept and everything else to keep it from, from rotting and decaying. But in the photos I'm looking at, I see wear and tear. I see some decay, of course. But it's not significant, in, in my opinion. And I mean, it's actually quite a beautiful home, and I believe that that, that siding is very characteristic of that style home when it was built. How did you determine that it's not repairable? Or is it repairable?
In my opinion, it's not repairable. I mean, there are several reasons. You know, what we found was so much decay, you know, all the way around the home. Now, obviously with wood, some of it could be reconditioned or repaired or replaced, but it, it just, it just doesn't make sense to do that, I guess. And, and so, you know, by the time, you know, you replace some of it and try to blend it in with what's there, it, you know, it's just almost impossible to do.
Okay, and then a second question is how, what, what did you do to, to come to the conclusion that it's not the original siding? Because it, it appears to be the original siding to me, and knowing, knowing that, you know, the age of the house and, and and the construction techniques used at that time and in that, in that area of the city, that's very characteristic of original siding. So did you pull any siding off or?
We did, we did some investigative exploratory type of demo, you know, to reveal the stud work underneath, you know, any, any other layers that might exist, I guess, on other homes that we have worked on in the historic districts. We have found other layers, you know, like, for example, vinyl siding over the top of, of a, of a shiplap, you know, siding, you know, so we had a better sense of it, but what we could not determine is that, you know, we did not feel like the existing siding is the original, primarily because of the nails that were used or round-headed instead of square-headed that would have been used in the 1900s, you know, and, and not after that point. And so, you know, we felt just real strongly that this was not the original, and, and so, you know, we would want to mimic that design if we had to mimic anything.
And, and did you find any additional siding layers underneath the siding?
We did not find other layers. We just, you know, went, went to the studs and, you know, with that top layer.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any final questions before we move on?
Madam Chair, I have one more question for Ted.
Sure, please.
Ted, could you pull up the picture from the historical survey in our packet that was done? So that survey done in 2001 had that siding on it that's on there currently now. Okay, and in, and in the survey in 2001, it was determined it was a contributing house in its current state with that siding, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Koski, that's correct.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, is the Registered Neighborhood Association here to testify? Nope, okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on this item? Okay. If the applicant would like, you have five minutes for rebuttal. Okay, they're going to yield their time. So with that, I will go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing and will consider a motion or some discussion.
I would like to have some discussion about the project.
Sure, please, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, so the standards that we base all of our decisions on say to retain, preserve, protect, then replace in kind. When we're looking at a historic property, we're looking at the integrity, and maybe a better word for integrity is authenticity. So the reason why these projects, I think, are starting to come here is what is authentic about a house and to replace all the siding? All the windows, the front door, the roof, is it still a historic structure? So I think for these sorts of projects, we should really be pushing applicants where they can to repair and then replace in kind, so replace with wood siding. I know Hardy board is probably a long-lasting material. You don't have to paint it as much, but when we're talking about this authenticity of the integrity of the materials, design, the feeling, I think wood is a better choice for this project, and I think we should be recommending that they repair where they can and then replace the, with wood. So that's my, my thoughts on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any additional comments from other commissioners?
Madam Chair, I've got some comments.
Commissioner Koski?
Repair and replace is, is written in our guidelines as the desired solution. Looking at the pictures, while I believe there, there is some decay and some deterioration, as you would expect, I don't believe it's beyond repairing or, or at all. In the case of replacement, our guidelines talk, I talk about that in 3.2, I guess, page 27 of our guidelines. Talk about those, how to do that. And when you're looking at the current survey that we have on record stating it as a contributing structure, and it has the siding on it that was there, which would appear in, in, in my mind to be the original siding, but even if it, even if it wasn't, at the time of the survey was considered to be contributing. The windows, if they're, if they're the same design, same light pattern, and within the guidelines of a clad wood window, I don't have an issue with that. I would have some questions about the trim around the windows to make sure that, that trim is done exactly the same way that's on there right now. But I, I I would not, I would not be able to approve this because I believe, because of the siding, and I believe it should be repaired.
Thank you, Commissioner Koski. Would anyone like to make a motion or are there any additional comments?
Madam Chair, just a point of order, you can approve. Madam Chair, just a point of order, you can approve, you know, the project in part, if you like, or be, you know, clear on what you expect, you know, from the applicant as far as the siding goes or what they can or can't do with that. So I just wanted to.
Thank you for that clarification, Ted.
Commissioner Montano, this is Commissioner Rupp, and I just wanted to offer that based on what was presented by staff and the recommendations of that, I would not be opposed to approving this as recommended with new siding and new windows. So that's just kind of where I stand. And so if we, depends on what is presented as a motion, but just hearing from what was presented and not knowing this home or not seeing it in, in what levels of repair, I would, I would vote to allow them to have new siding and new windows. So that's just my stance. Wanted to share that.
Commissioner Rupp, I'm seeing nods from Commissioner Pape as well. Would anyone like to make a motion? As Ted mentioned, we can approve, we can selectively approve things from this application. So hopefully that opens some opportunity for this project. And I am open to entertaining a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please, Commissioner Kosky.
For DRH 21-00140, I would move that we approve the window replacement with the condition that the trim around all the windows is replaced in kind as to what's on there. And that according to our guidelines in 3.2.3, that siding be repaired as opposed to being replaced.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Wonderful. Victoria, would you please call the roll?
Rupp?
Nay.
Kosky?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Pape?
Nay.
Montano?
Aye.
Machine carries four in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is item number five, DRH 21-00168, Jeremy Dancer at 1411 East Washington Street. Ted, can we please have the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is a request to demolish a non-contributing, single-family structure and to construct a new, single-family structure. The property is located in the East End Historic District and considered non-contributing. So this is an aerial of the property of the existing house. And there are some photos of the house. And this is a site plan for the proposed new structure. The garage, the existing garage will remain, so there won't be a new garage. The project is proposed to meet setbacks and will be below lot coverage you know, maximums recommended in the guidelines. These are the elevations, front and rear. The front will have a partial front porch with kind of a tri-gable facade and sort of a shed over the partial front porch. These are the side elevations. And these are some of the neighboring properties on the block and adjacent. There has been some public comment. The, we do believe these are in your packet. The East End Neighborhood Association opposes demolition of the house. They see the house as actually being contributing if it were reevaluated. Preservation Idaho also has a letter concerning the demolition and being opposed to the demolition. They did request an evaluation for eligibility from SHIPO. I believe that letter is in your packet as well. SHIPO says the structure is not likely considered eligible, but would potentially be considered contributing in a National Register Historic District. Stuff does recommend approval of DRH 21168. You know, we've run across these a few times. I think our legal department has been, has, has talked to the commission a bit about this as well. You know, when somebody has a document, a survey says it's non-contributing or contributing, they kind of have an entitlement sort of to that, to what that document says. So, you know, if we want to look at properties and changing the status of a property, doing that ahead of any application process, reviewing a neighborhood or reviewing properties, but legal has recommended that in, in mid-application process that reversing a contributing status or challenging a contributing status or denying a project due to that is, can be problematic. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Ted. Are there any questions? Okay, is the applicant present? Is the applicant present?
We are.
Wonderful. Hi, please state your name and address for the record, and you have 20 minutes.
This is Buster Dancer with Busterville, speaking with Jeremy at my side.
You're breaking up a little bit. Can you try again?
My name is Stuart Dancer, known as Buster. I'm the Buster in Busterville. I live at 3565 North 39 in Boise. Personally, I've been a resident of the North End for 34 years now. We met with Greg and Susan Watkins, who are the owners of the property last, last year, and they had contacted architects and and remodeling contractors because their goal was to to expand this house by putting a basement or a roof in to basically get what they desired, so.
I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt. We're having some trouble hearing your mic. If you could put it as close to your mouth as possible.
Sorry about that.
Better sound, thank you.
How are we doing now? Can you hear me?
Yes, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay. I was contacted by Greg and Susan Watkins about a year ago when a plumber who does work for us had looked at their property to replumb the crawl space. They had intended originally, and you have a letter from the owners, Greg and Susan Watkins, I do believe, that addresses a lot of this. But I was contacted and asked to look at the property and give my my feelings as far as what, you know, how should they, how should they move forward? Well, I've been a contractor here in Boise for about 43 years, so I have quite a bit of experience, both in new construction, and we do a lot of remodeling as well. So I inspected the home and crawled underneath the house and, you know, where I could get underneath the house, noticed the, the foundation was in terrible shape, which could be improved with a, with a basement, obviously. But my concern was that the structure of the floor, I don't think there would be a feasible way to lift that house and add a basement. And that was where it started. Then I went ahead and stuck my head into the attic, and it appeared to me that the home had been remodeled several times. I couldn't tell you how many because of the way it was done, but my inspection just revealed that most of the work done on the home was very, very substandard. Nothing, nothing was really done right. You know, I've worked on projects in the North End on Harrison Boulevard where, where, you know, the, the homes are well constructed. This just was not one of those homes. So my recommendation was to demolish the home, to get a proper foundation. In my opinion, there is no way to really put a proper basement underneath an existing home because of the issues you can have with moisture entering that space. The proper way to build a basement is to, to overdig by three or four feet, let them form it, put in a proper drainage system below the grade of the basement slab, and, and design a system that in case there isn't a flood, which in our area, 90% of the time is related to irrigation. It's not rain or snow or any of those problems. It's just inevitable that somebody's sprinkler system fails and, or something fails that floods the basements. But anyway, the prices they were getting for the basement kept going up, especially when I contacted the contractor that was gonna do the, the basement, which I, I won't be responsible for that, so I won't be, you know, I didn't want to be liable to that, so I wouldn't contract to do that work. But after voicing my concerns, I think he got cold feet and the price, I think, probably started going up a little bit. But anyway, it is my professional opinion that what we're doing is the right thing to do, the most feasible thing to do. And as far as the integrity of the neighborhood, I think the design meets every criteria that, that new construction should meet. With that, I think that's, that's what I, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, wonderful. Is the Registered Neighborhood Association here to testify?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have 20 minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Brittany Sigliano. I live at 403 North Mobley Drive. And tonight I am speaking on behalf of the East End Neighborhood Association. Yes, you will see our letter of opposition, and we did believe that the hearing was last Monday, but coming out of 2020, we're still figuring out how to use those calendars again. So I apologize for the miscommunication there. I will note, we did have a very successful annual meeting, though. Speaking to 1411 East Washington, Ina is opposed to the request for demolition, and we respectfully ask that you deny the application based on the lack of findings. While the structure is not currently listed as contributing, as SHIPO noted, it likely could be contributing in a district. Additionally, as Preservation Idaho has pointed out, and I will take the opportunity to speak to again, we are all painfully aware of the lack of updated surveys, which lands us in the position of constantly struggling to protect our historic districts. Factually, we cannot argue that the property is listed as non-contributing, and we are not asking for a change in status tonight as we agree that presents a very challenging legal issue. Therefore, we do agree that criteria has been met. However, as SHIPO noted, the property can and does reasonably meet criteria for contributing status in a district, both national and local. Therefore, we believe this criteria has not been met. The demolition of a structure in any of our historic districts always adversely affects the character of the district and the adjacent properties. At the time of the survey, this property, for whatever reason, was listed as non-contributing. In fact, in every district, there are non-contributing properties. This home, contributing or not, helps to make up the district as a whole. Without it, the district begins to weaken, lose its story, its history, and its purpose. Quite frankly, contributing status should be one of the least weighted criteria considered. We respectfully disagree that the applicant has met this criteria. In his application letter, Mr. Dancer said, "The home is in horrible condition and not worth salvaging." This statement is troubling at best. The disregard for the local district and preservation, even in terms of resources, without any documentation that the home is in fact in quote unquote horrible condition, suggests that our districts have been failed and contributing status again carries far too much weight. Secondly, as Mr. Klinger mentioned in an earlier application, we are experiencing death by a thousand paper cuts in our historic districts. We will never get a greater number of contributing structures in our districts, be it through survey or time, if the demolition of these so-called non-contributing homes are replaced with faux-craftsman-style homes that we are told will fit the neighborhood. Mr. Dancer mentioned, he didn't think the house could be lifted. As far as anyone knows, a professional home mover hasn't been consulted, and neither has a structural engineer. Additionally, the condition cannot be so horrible, as the home has hired people living in it since the current owners purchased it in 2017. We agree the criteria for rehab has not been met. Lastly, while plans have been submitted, and we cannot factually argue that, the fact that this criteria is again tied to contributing status shows the disproportionate weight placed on contributing and non-contributing. A non-contributing status of a home in our local district that only has to meet three of five findings is 75% of the way towards demolition if it's non-contributing. Commissioner Kosky, in an earlier application this evening, you mentioned getting in front of council with respect to the guidelines. I would like to note that staff, along with Preservation Idaho and the East and North Ends, we are working on just that. I would like to invite any and all of the commissioners to work with us in that endeavor, because as was mentioned, you all have one of the most challenging volunteer jobs. For today, though, with the current standards and guidelines, we believe that 1411 East Washington has only met two of the five criteria, and we ask that you deny the request for demolition. Please note that our request with this application is no different than what we ask of others in the historic district, and that is to respect the work of the neighbors and neighborhoods and the history and the story that all homes collectively tell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sigliano. Are there any members of the public wishing to testify this evening?
Can you, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, I'm Gabby Thomason. I live at 1303 North Eldorado, Boise 83704. And I am here tonight to speak on behalf of Preservation Idaho. As noted, we have submitted a letter of comment regarding this property that outlines our concerns with the demolition application, along with an updated determination of eligibility from the State Historic Preservation Office. The two main points we would like to make tonight are these. First, current non-contributing status does not and should not automatically condemn a historic building to demolition. This, the applicant is still required to show why the property meets three of the five justifications necessary for demolition. Condemnation of an entire building to the landfill should not be done without due diligence. Preservation Idaho requested a review of National Register eligibility from the State Historic Preservation Office, and their review confirmed that this building would be considered contributing. The home only lacks contributing status because the city has not updated its East End survey since it was first done in 2002. Second, the contractor's letter of intent for this project is significantly lacking any documentation or detail that would justify this demolition. The comment that the house is in horrible condition and not worth salvaging is not sufficient to support sending an entire historic building to the landfill. If this contractor's professional opinion If this contractor's professional opinion is that it cannot be saved, they should be able to document that statement with detail and with photographs. That is part of the required criterion for a demolition application in a historic district. Our historic districts were created by the city with the support of Boise citizens. Our city government and our citizens continue to support our historic districts and expect appropriate protections for our historic assets. In spite of good intentions, the city has not kept up with needed surveys, both new and updated. To sufficiently protect our remaining inventory of significant historic buildings. The East End Historic District was listed in the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen seventy-nine and made into a local historic district in two thousand three. Clearly, any number of non-contributing homes in the district like this one. May now be eligible to be considered contributing despite modifications, some of which were done. Over fifty years ago and are now part of that historic structure. In summary, and most importantly, this project in our opinion meets only one of the five criteria for demolition. And that one criterion is met only because the Eastern survey has not been updated. We ask that you deny the certificate of appropriateness for this application tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public tonight wishing to testify? It doesn't appear so. Um, so if the applicant would like, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'll just stand by my earlier statements. I'll, uh, you know, it's a non-contributing. I was told it was non-contributing. I feel like we've done everything as far as our part. To, to fill. The needs of what is required and, and I really believe we're building a beautiful new home there. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, I will go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing and. Will consider a motion or entertain discussion. Any discussion?
I guess so.
This is Commissioner Rupp and I move to approve DRH twenty-one, one sixty-eight based on staff's analysis. And findings contained within the staff report.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Rupp. Um, before I ask for a second, um, do we have any discussion?
I would like to have a discussion about this project. We've had Ina, who is the Registered Neighborhood Association. Come out against this project and we've also had Preservation Idaho come out against this project. So I don't think. We should so hastily approve this project without some discussion. So for the Secretary of Interior Standards, most properties change over time. Those changes that have acquired historic significance. In their own right shall be retained and preserved. This is one of the standards that our city guidelines are based on. So just based on that, um, standard, uh, this project doesn't meet. Our guidelines. And then second, um, it also doesn't meet standard number three. Each property shall be recognized as a physical record of its time, place, and use. Changes that create a false sense of historical development such as adding. Conjectural features or architectural elements from other buildings shall not be undertaken. You haven't heard this for a couple of months, but it's a faux craftsman. Uh, the design is on original. I'm sorry. It, um, just mimics everything that's in the neighborhood. And that the design should be of its time and place. So those are my concerns, um, with the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Um, does anyone else have any comments?
Madam Chair, I've got a comment.
Please.
I'm looking at our guidelines and how, uh, for demolition, uh, at least three of the five conditions. Need to be met. I believe we have to go by our current survey from, uh, that, uh. Determined it to be a non-contributing house. Uh, so I believe they've met that. The condition of rehabilitation would not be economically feasible. Uh, you know, we see these, these kind of, uh. Reports and. Estimates come before us all the time and I believe we're. We're a little bit handicapped as a commission in that. We have no control of who they go get these reports from or these bids from. They're not from. They're typically not from someone that is trying to figure out a way to rehabilitate them, but to find a way. To remove them. And they're not preservation. Focused or renovation focused. And while, um, I, I do don't want to discredit the builder. I, uh, in, in any way, I do believe that, um. It would be much more helpful as a commission if we had some. Some way in the future to. Somehow, uh, direct applicants in a way to figure out how to rehabilitate their home instead of take it down. So I. I, I believe that the place is probably rehabilitable and yes, it costs more money to do that. Costs a lot more money. It's always, it's less expensive to build a new house, although I don't know what I'm about now. With OSB being sixty-five dollars a sheet, but, or whatever it is, but it's, it costs more money to rehabilitate than to build a new house. So it's much easier to say, let's get rid of it. And build a new one. So I, I just, I just add that as commentary for all of us as Commissioners and, and something that. Uh, for the public who's testifying and, and, and spending. Time, effort, money, emotional effort on their testimony. I, I, you know, I agree. I agree with what Ina said. I agreed with, um, Preservation Idaho. I, I, I agree with those things. Uh, but when I'm looking at this. In front of us and the guidelines which we have to uphold. I'm gonna have to, uh. I'm gonna have to agree with the, uh, the motion by Commissioner Rupp.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosky. I, um, wholeheartedly agree. Um. I am very. Bittersweetly happy to hear, um, that there is an effort to potentially look at making big changes. And potentially resurifying, um, our historic districts. As mentioned by, um, the Ina representative. Because a lot of houses could be saved this way. Um, and unfortunately tonight, we have to go off of our current survey. Um, and so I will be voting in support of that motion. Um. Speaking of, is there a second to Commissioner Rupp's motion to approve this item?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosky. Um, Victoria, would you please call the roll?
Rupp?
Hi.
Kosky?
Hi.
Weaver?
Hi.
Brown?
Nay.
Pape?
Hi.
Montoto?
Hi.
Motion carries five in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. Um, the next item we have on our agenda tonight is item number nine, DRH two one dash zero zero one eight four, Chris Peterson at sixteen seventeen North Twenty-Fourth Street. Ted, can we please have the report?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, um, this is a request to demolish most of a non-contributing chapel building. And to reconstruct into a, uh, two-unit condominium building. This is in the expanded North End Historic District. It is on the, on the booth property, the booth home property, which the booth home is a historic, uh, contributing structure. The chapel building, uh, is not considered a contributing part of that property. Um, this is the overall booth property. Most of this has already been demolished. Uh, this is the historic booth home. Uh, a lot of the rest of the buildings were constructed, uh, after the nineteen sixties. And so this is the existing chapel building. Most of the Commissioners weren't around when this property was proposed for redevelopment. Um, the entire booth block. Was, uh, re-subdivided. A planned unit development was approved. For a number of single-family unit, units. The booth home itself converted to a, uh, I believe, three-unit condominium building. Is that correct? Um, and then the chapel was at that time proposed to remain as is and converted to condominiums as well. The rest of the property, uh, single-family structures. So the applicant, um, and this is, these are some photos provided by the applicant of the chapel. So originally the chapel building was, and the applicant can go a little more into detail into that background, but the, the originally they meant to, uh, preserve that building. And convert it, uh, to condo units. But found that the, most of the structure was just not conducive to what they needed to do for the project. And so this is the site plan for the structure, for the project. It's largely gonna be, um, in the same footprint. Um, it'll be a little closer to Bella Street than the existing building. And then this is the proposed structure. It is modern. However, it, it is, uh, compared to some of the buildings on the property, it will be lower profile with the flat sloping roofs. In the past, the Commission on Properties that have. That have contained, uh, mid-century or more modern buildings that are, that are being demolished. They've approved more modern, uh, structures, more modern designs to replace them. So this is the, uh, side, both side elevations and the front and back elevations. So we did receive public comment from Preservation Idaho. They say that the chapel contributes to the, um, overall eligibility of the property. And that the new design, they don't believe is compatible with the property. Staff does recommend approval of DRH twenty-one, one eighty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ted? Okay, is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and you have twenty minutes.
Jefferson, Montoto, and Commissioners, my name is Andy Urstad with Urstad Architects. Uh, address is three ten North Fifth Street in Boise eight three seven zero two. I am not Chris Peterson. That's Chris over there. Uh, Chris is my, uh, project architect on this project, working under, uh, under our overview and, uh, doing, I think, a fabulous job. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be pretty brief. I think twenty-eight minutes, if that's all right. Could you reset? No, you don't need to. I'm just kidding. We, we, uh, we are definitely in, in favor with staff's, um, staff's report. It was thorough. It was comprehensive. The findings of facts, uh, were accurate. The conditions of approval. Um, and the recommended conditions, uh, we, we believe are very appropriate for this project. I, we did receive on, on, uh, May twentieth, the, um, Preservation Idaho letter. And, um. Don't disagree that we may need to make a little bit, a few adjustments, but it's nothing in the, in the realm of eliminating or, or denying this project. One of the comments was, "A good start would be to match the red brick." We will be matching the red brick, uh, and u- using that. I think the other thing that's not well-known is that the timbers in the old, uh, chapel are elegant. They're beautiful. We will be reusing those timbers in, in this actual structure, the two-story volume. So we're, we're gaining what elements we can and, and leaving those that are really problematic. If you remember seeing in the image, the, um, the battered siding, uh, that's just happens to be asbestos siding. It's no big deal. If, if we could actually market that and use it, it will last forever, but it's frowned upon. Uh, it's non-friable. It's perfectly safe. But again, it has to go. The other, I think the other thing that, uh, we feel, uh, strongly about is that. This, this configuration of two structure, two units is actually going to be behind the structures built. To the west of it. This is, uh, really on the, on the alley side. And so. You will get glimpses of it as you, as you drive by it, but you're not going to see this in its entirety unless you literally drive down the alley. I, I do, I, I think there's been a ton of discussion tonight about, um, about this notion that. Of contributing or non-contributing. And I, and I think, uh, Commissioner Kosky hit it on the head. That the, the books and the design manuals and the historic surveys that we are using. Uh, are what, what we have to base our decisions on and what, what, what we too base our decisions on. So we, we take that, uh, serious. Excuse me. I, I sat up there at this, at your podium for twelve and a half years as, uh, Chair of the Design Review Committee and. Uh, we too even had many challenging struggles, uh, relative to, to projects and. You, you know, I totally understand the position you're in and I applaud the fact that you guys are willing to give so freely of your time. Um, it's, it's tough. At the end of the day, I think we're all bound by, uh, what, uh, Ted has, uh, has to base his analysis and, and his review on. And so. That's why I, I came out just stating that we, we concur with staff's findings of facts and conditions, recommended conditions of approval. One clarification I, Ted and I talked about. And I, I know Preservation Idaho will likely try and go down and, and say, well, we've not met each of the requirements, but. As you look at the, um, at the staff report, four of the five items, uh, were identified. As meeting the necessary findings. And I think, uh, the one finding that was not met was. Have we reasonably demonstrated that rehabilitation of the building, object site, et cetera, would not be economically feasible? I don't real, I don't believe that we have to, to approve that since we have to deal with some asbestos and some, some other, uh, materials and products that, um. As we decon, as we deconstruct the, the chapel and utilize the, those elements that we can use and divert them from the landfill. Um, I think that is part of the process. So I would, um, Chris, did you want to put up, uh? An aerial view or? Okay, so, so really you get a sense that it, it will be concealed behind the, the booth home and, um. Uh, and along the alley, the houses to the west will also screen it. So I would stand for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hurstad?
Um, I had a question. So part of your development agreement wasn't it to preserve the chapel building?
Chairman Montoto and Commissioner Brown, the, the, I can't honestly speak to the exact words of the development agreement. Uh, part of the reason we're here to you is that we're asking for an adjustment to incorporate, uh, this design into. Uh, into this area and retain as much of the chapel elements that we can, but not specifically save the chapel. I, I, I'll digress a little bit as well, Commissioner Brown. Our firm designed Salvation Army's new facility out on Emerald and many of our meetings were in that chapel. So I've, for two and a half years, spent a lot of time in that chapel. And in the winter, you wore coats and gloves and in the summer, you basically. wore t-shirts. I mean, the chapel itself as, as an element was was a challenge. And I think the Salvation Army recognized that, that while it had elements that were not consistent with the original booth house. We, we have made the decision and we've, we've worked with the client that this is the way to recognize elements of the, of the, of the chapel without, quote, keeping the chapel, if you will. So I, again, I, to answer your question, I don't have the very specific language of the development agreement.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you so much. Um, is the Registered Neighborhood Association here to testify? Wonderful.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Kate Henwood from the Northern Neighborhood Association. I live at 1116 North 12th Street. Um, so I first wanted to acknowledge the new information provided by Mr. Erstad and thank him for his commitment to preserving the existing red brick on the chapel, which as you'll hear in my testimony is something that Nina feels quite strongly about. Nina and the developer, Mr. Fitz, have had several conversations since he purchased the project from the initial developer, George Cooper, whose designs were the ones originally approved by the Commission and P&amp;Z. And Mr. Fitz has proven himself to be mindful and well-intentioned every step of the way. We are thrilled with his efforts to repurpose the main building for Phase One of the project and are confident that his rehabilitation plans will do the original 1921 structure justice. That being said, we do have some concerns about the proposed design for the chapel. Nina has no qualms with the demolition of the northern end, the more utilitarian kitchen and classroom portion of the second building. And we greatly appreciate the applicant's desire to preserve the chapel itself. However, the design of the chapel structure is rendered as inappropriate in the context of the site. As presented, there are no visual clues that this building or a major component of the history of this property and its function. It would be a missed opportunity to not tie the chapel into the design of the adjacent building, giving a nod to the original and important relationship between the two. This could be achieved in part, most readily with the use of the existing red brick, unaltered by paint, something we're confident the architect could creatively accommodate, which now it sounds like they plan to do, which is wonderful. Another major element of this historic property is the large open green space surrounding the buildings, which will be diminished by the seven single-family homes planned for the block. This makes it all the more important that the remaining structural elements be given great consideration. And a final point worth noting is that the contemporary structure as designed could have the unintended consequence of influencing the styles of homes that's not yet constructed on the open lots. The bottom line is that we'd like to see the chapel design more congruent with the main structure and respectfully ask that a more sympathetic approach be considered. As it stands, we cannot offer our support on this application.
Thank you so much, Ms. Henwood. Are there any members of the public tonight wishing to testify? Mr. Klinger, please go forward. State your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes.
I wasn't prepared. David Klinger, 1404 North 24th Street. I wasn't prepared to testify on this tonight, but I feel I should. You probably don't want to hear any more from me tonight, but here's three more minutes in defense of a comprehensive as well as a complementary historic preservation vision for this property. I've been involved with the booth home when the Salvation Army owned it and was first marketing it. I've appeared before you at numerous hearings. I was here when the first owner bought it, Mr. Cooper, and now with Mr. Fitz. I was present when the North End Neighborhood Association spent $4,000 to craft a visioning process for the future of this property. So I've been in it from the beginning, and it's my conclusion that we're drifting farther and farther away from the original vision for this property. Visually, we're just simply getting farther and farther away from what was envisioned as the complementariness of the chapel and the historic hospital building, both of which are National Register of Historic Places eligible. We see by this design that the, 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 the proposed architecture for this is probably more appropriate for Harris Ranch than North 24th Street in the north end. I think you're going to have a lot of issues in a design review process to keep these two structures, these historic structures in some kind of balance. I don't see it there in this artist rendering. We have a good relationship with Mr. Fitz. He's been very generous to us, and we want to maintain that relationship. But I submit to you, there's a lot of issues connected with what's being appropriate, what's being proposed for the chapel that still need to be ironed out. A, a project should, concealing it behind something should not be your goal. Your goal should be to highlight a historic structure. Make that a part of your marketing plan for the redevelopment of the booth block. You should not just slink away and say, nobody's going to see this. These two structures should be prominent. They should be visually complementary. They should be an asset to the neighborhood and the community. And they should conform to the original vision that was put on the table as much as three to four years ago. So I think we have a lot more work on this particular design proposal to get it back into some kind of balance. I appreciate the concession already on the preserving the brick. That's, that's just a no-brainer. That should be the starting point for some further refinements. So we're prepared to work with the developer to see that this first vision, this first starting point has the rough edges burnished off, and we can have two historic structures that complement each other. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. Are there any other members of the public wishing to testify this evening? Looks like we have some online.
Yes. Hi, this is Gabby Thomason again, 1303 North Eldorado, Boise 83704. And I am again speaking on behalf of Preservation Idaho. We would also like to acknowledge our appreciation of the concessions that have been made regarding the original brick. Also, I'm reading from a, from a, something I have written and just want to, I'm not great going off the cuff, so if I have a couple sentences here that are have been now changed, please bear with me. So Preservation Idaho submitted a letter of comment on this proposed application. We oppose the proposed design for the chapel, and we have shared, as stated, our concerns directly with the developer, Steve Fitz. We would like to again note that we strongly support Mr. Fitz's project overall. He has taken on the rehabilitation of an important historic site and has met on a regular basis with interested parties, including Preservation Idaho, and we believe in his intentions and his integrity. In the case of the proposed exterior for the National Register Eligible Chapel, we find that the updated architectural plan changes the original mid-century design to the point that it is unrecognizable. The chapel sits on a large parcel in the North End Historic District. The parcel is historically significant because of several factors, including both the historic buildings on-site and the open space that surrounded those buildings. The open space will be almost completely diminished due to the new housing that will be built on the east and west sides and all four corners. The only two historic structures that will remain are the two-story historic hospital facing 24th Street and the chapel. That makes how they are rehabilitated even more important. Again, we appreciate Mr. Fitz and Erstad's, Erstad Architects' plan to accommodate the original brick to keep with the more original style of the building. Ideally, the stained glass window on the south side, which is currently plexiglass, could be remade with real glass to preserve the feel of the building and lend a unique architectural flair to the design. We are in agreement that most of the north side of the building can be demolished for a new build and are willing to make this compromise with the hope that the important chapel section can be preserved both inside and out. Preserving the interior design is wonderful. However, it is not sufficient to justify the extent to which the exterior is being modified in this proposed application. A sympathetic design for the chapel condo that includes maintaining its natural brick will help it blend more harmoniously with the brick exterior of the two-story historic building that sits so close by, which we appreciate because this will be important to help preserve the feeling and defining characteristics of both buildings, since they were built to complement each other despite their very different architectural styles. So that harmony should be maintained. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to testify this evening? It doesn't appear so. If the applicant would like, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Jefferson Montoto and, and Commission members. Again, I stand by my initial statement. We, we think staff has done a fantastic job in their evaluation and their analysis, and we concur with with findings of facts and conditions, recommended conditions of approval. So with, with that, I appreciate, is it Ms. Henwood and Mr. Klinger and Ms. Thompson's remarks and comments. And one of the things we were going to show is this image actually reflects the width of the, of the lower left portion reflects the width of the existing chapel. We have, we've done a number of studies from way back and as, as recently as yesterday morning, drawing, Friday morning and this morning, sketching what we think could, could be a workable, a workable solution that really keeps this intent, but comes back and picks up some of the elements of, of the chapel. The chapel, you know, part, part of the challenge in, in any historic project is conforming or non-conforming is, what do you, what are you intending to do and what's your ultimate goal? And I think from the perspective that our client, Mr. Fitz, has, has all along stated is, we want this to be great. We want it to, we want it to look good, and we, we also want it to be a, a little bit unique. We can pick up the chapel elements. And, but they're not going to be identical because that's not the right thing to do. I mean, I think, I think if we go back to the Secretary of the Interior's items about new and old and existing, they're very different and distinct inputs. So we, and, and our firm has done a lot of projects that have been recognized by the Department of the, the Secretary of State and the Department of the Interior. So, and, and in doing those, you are told, do not quote, "copy," but do something unique and interesting. The, the other thing, and I, I don't know, I'm not trying to marginalize the fact from Bella, looking north, there's going to be a garage, including some of the view. So this is, this, Chris, go back to that last one. This is what gets cut off, and then you put any trees and any, any vegetation and whatnot. And, and you'll see that it's a, it's a snapshot of the minimalist view. What I would like to do is, we would love for an approval tonight, and we would love the opportunity to work directly with Ted to refine this a little bit, but I don't want the project held up. We're, our, our client's been working diligently and hard and been a very willing partner with Nina and with the neighbors. And I think what is brought forth will be, I think, very respectful of, of the intent behind a preservation of the chapel. I'm, I'm sure as the plexiglass panels are pulled out, they may be available for purchase or, or donation, but it goes back to the comment, in the winter, that place is really cold. I don't have any further comments. Would be happy to answer any additional questions. We really appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Are there any final questions for Ted or the applicant?
I have a question. So you are saying that you might be refining the, the brick that's currently proposed to the red brick, correct?
Yes, we'll be, we'll be bringing in the red brick at the, at the portion, the volume that's identified, really that mimics the footprint of the chapel right now.
Are there any other changes to the color scheme that you're envisioning with that red brick change on the upper portions?
I, we'd like the opportunity to look at that and then, and then run it past Ted. I think his discerning eye is, you know, we really appreciate it. And I think if he had a question or a challenge where that he could bring it back to you, but I think from the most part, we would look at that as well.
Okay. And then I had one other comment slash question. So our guidelines talk about sustainability. Are there any sustainable, like, solar panels or anything proposed on this project? I know it's a little bit off cuff, but.
Jefferson Montoto and Commissioner Brown, you're really stretching on that one. The, the comment sustainability is something that we're very, very in tune with, and the fact that we're going to be saving the, the the timber beams that create the chapel and will be picking up the references to the brick and whatnot, the historic brick. Our, our first step, we've not looked at solar panels. We'll, we can approach that with the client. Those would be concealed on the roof and would not be visible to the public. So, love the idea, though.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Um, oh, did you have a question?
I have a question for Ted.
Oh, sure, please.
Ted, since, like, I wasn't around when the proposal was approved for the planned unit development. Can you comment on that or maybe enlighten us a little bit on what? I mean, if it was agreed that the building was supposed to stay, I kind of don't know why we're having this discussion. So what was the planned agreement? And can you maybe give us some details on that?
Oh, yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Kosky, I don't believe there was a development agreement. Those are usually only done when the property is rezoned. And I don't, this property wasn't rezoned. But I had Josh look for a development agreement, and he wasn't able to find one. So if there were a development agreement, if the property were rezoned and there was a redevelopment agreement, then there would be kind of a lock there. You'd have to get, you have to go back and have that development agreement modified. Otherwise, it was just part of the planning and development process that was part of this, this property. So with, with the understanding that the scope of the project has changed, I believe the applicants have went back and, and talked to our current planning manager about any need to maybe modify that planned unit development, whether that would be a staff level modification or have to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not sure. I think, but I think those conversations were, had been had. I believe there was maybe some staff modifications, if there was a modification involved with that. But it was part of that approval for the overall planned unit development. So there have been multiple changes on this planned unit development with the style of the houses that have been approved as they have come through this commission. And a few other minor changes. So this is one granted, a more significant change with the project where the chapel's not in really any essence being preserved, but it wasn't, you know, from the city standpoint, wasn't considered a contributing part of the property. So it was from the very beginning, you know, had, it was understood from the very beginning of the entire project that the chapel could be demolished, just depending on how the project progressed. So there was, there was an understanding that the, that the, that the chapel was not a contributing, from the city standpoint, a contributing member of the property and could be, could be demolished. So it's not unusual for for somebody to come back and want to modify a planned unit development or modify a large project like this.
Hey, thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I, I mean, it states, it just states that the approved planned unit development in, in the packet that the approved planned unit approved planned unit development application, the chapel was proposed to remain in its existing form. And we're not doing that anymore. So we're changing the planned unit development. So I just wanted to verify that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kosky, that's why. Madam Chair, Commissioner Kosky, that's why they're here too. This is a requested change to what was previously approved. So they are going through the processes to request the change in the original plans.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will close the public portion of the hearing. And we should probably have some discussion first. I cannot believe it's, this is four years ago that this application first came forward. I was pregnant, so I can't believe that. I. This one's hard for me. I am really happy. That Mr. Hurstad and his team. I mean, just echoing Nina and Preservation Idaho are planning on utilizing that brick. I think that's wonderful. Thank you for doing that. I think seeing this chapel go is very sad. I can understand it. I think from a development standpoint. But it's a big, it's a big bummer. I'm not really sure how I feel about it. And that's really the extent of my thoughts at this point. So if anyone has any comments, I would really love to hear them.
I can chime in. So I I agree. It's a hard pill to swallow. Having this awesome mid-century chapel. Demolished. There's lots of properties that. Are non-contributing that are of the mid-century vintage, for lack of better words. That we keep seeing demolished. So I, this is where we need to push for additional survey. That being said, I do like the design. I think it's more original than what we've seen. I'm glad it's not a faux craftsman style. So kudos to that. I think there just needs to be some retooling for me in the color scheme. Once you have that red brick at the front and I would love to see more. A sustainable, like a solar panels or something. Just because it is new construction and I think that's something we should be pushing for new construction is to have those sustainable goals.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I wholeheartedly agree. Commissioner Kosky, I know you have thoughts.
I have thoughts. I like to, I like to voice them. I I love the design. I I think it's, I think, I actually, I just love it. I think it's fantastic. I think it's it's part of. Part of, it's not faux craftsman. It's a, it's something that is a, is in with the time, the construction of today. And as well as using some elements from the past. So I have, I don't have any issue with that. My issue is the fact that we're demolishing a building. And and it's. It's more that I know that there were discussions for years on how to plan this, this, this property. I mean, it's a whole city block. And many, many discussions involving, you know, great people and great minds and, you know, neighborhood organizations and and so on. And. There was lots of give and take and lots of concessions made on on all sides to get to an agreement. To develop this property and what buildings to keep, what buildings not to keep. Is a big part of it. So. The fact that I'm looking at this and there's nothing left of that thing. That, you know, it's, we're taking down a building that was originally planned to be kept. And the keeping that building was decided on and traded for, so to speak, with other buildings that needed to be demolished or or could be demolished. So you can demolish this, you can demolish this, but you have to keep this. So that that is my my biggest issue and that is, is this was part, this was supposed to be kept. That's part of the planned use of it. And. Here we are back to discussion on demolition again. It seems to be a theme tonight, but. I either I would like some more information or I on on the development plan. And and what was decided on or not decided on and and how to keep it and why were, why it was decided to be kept. And now all of a sudden, we're getting rid of it. And and it's not because it it. It isn't rehabilitable. I mean, it just, you know, it just doesn't fit the. Current owner's needs. That's that's really, at least described in the report. So. I'm open and willing and to listen to any other commissioner and what they have to say about it. Because it's it's kind of confusing to me actually that we're even talking about demolishing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosky. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to add?
Madam Chair, just really quick. I I don't, I don't remember any of the particulars of why we were keeping. You know, the reasons for keeping that other than, you know, it is part of the history of the the site. But I do understand the challenges that have come up with. With that building and do appreciate that Preservation Idaho has indicated that they would be willing to, you know, work with the client on. You know, trying to make some sort of a design that is, I guess, a little more historically sensitive and transitional to the rest of that development. And I I think that, you know, the design is is getting there. And I would be in favor of supporting the application with the condition that, you know, there is a design modification that is worked on with the city. And that, you know, it should include some of the, you know, some of the brick changes that they talked about in there. But, you know, one of the things that is really charming about the North End is the combination and contrast of the new and the old. And I think a little bit more modern type structure there with maybe a nod to some of the history of the site will be appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioner Weaver. Does anyone want to make a motion or add other thoughts?
I I can make a motion. Just give me one second. Okay, I'm gonna motion to approve DRH 21 dash zero zero one eight four. With the staff recommendations of the conditions of approval. And with the condition that Ersted Architects and the applicant worked with the city and Preservation Idaho on those design changes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Rep. Victoria, would you please call the roll?
To get a, oh, point of clarification. So. I guess if the applicant is going to work with staff and Preservation Idaho and others, what specifically are we talking about with? You know, I just want to make sure we're clear with with the commission on what you're looking for. So what specifically, as far as any modifications, would you, would you prefer to see?
I think we would be looking at the incorporation of the brick into the building. Along with maybe the the color scheme and any other. Salvageable materials from the chapel.
Was timber mentioned at one point?
Yeah, timber was.
Yep, yeah, that would be beautiful to see.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Victoria, would you please call the roll? Rep?
Hi.
Kosky?
Nay.
Beaver?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Pape?
I recuse myself from the vote due to a conflict of interest.
Montoto?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four in favor. Thank you. Our next item on tonight's agenda is item number 10, DRH 21 dash zero zero one eight seven, Patrick Garrity at 711 North 19th Street. Ted, can we please have the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The item before you is a request to add a front porch. To remove and reconstruct the chimney. And replace window shutters. The property is located in the expanded North End and is considered contributing. This is the property. It's a large lot fronting 19th Street. You'll probably remember an approval a few months ago on this project where they put an addition on the back. And then proposed a front porch at that time to be on the front of the structure. That porch. There was some discussion on how the houses morphed over time from more of a vernacular craftsman type of structure. Into a colonial revival type of structure, which is indicated on the on the survey form now. And so what the originally, the applicants were were putting a porch or proposing to put a porch back on that really mimicked what the original porch looked like. And they had a photo of what that original porch looked like. The commission thought that that was inappropriate due to the changing style of the house that that original. Porch that they were putting back on wasn't really compatible with the style of the house as it is today. And so they have come back. With a new request for a front porch. And they have made some changes to the porch, hoping that it can be more compatible with the colonial revival style. Of structure that that exists today. So this is the house. As it exists. Minus the porch. And then you'll see on the right photo, that's the chimney, the painted yellow brick that is going to be reconstructed. And so this is a site plan. Basically showing where the porch up here, it's going to be a full length front porch. And it will require a variance just due to the front setback. So they are proposing a front setback with the porch of about 12 feet, eight inches, eight and a half inches. 15 is required. So they will need to, if they're approved for this porch or any kind of entry on this structure. Covered entry, they would be required to get a variance for that front setback. This is an elevation of what that porch would look like. So this one has the rounded columns and spindles and then some colonial, other colonial. You know, associations with it as well. And this is a side elevation. So the main change, I think, is the columns, the pediment over the entry and the rounded columns. This was the original front porch on the house. The applicants provided this photo. And this, this is what they tried to mimic on that first application and the commission did deny that application. And then again, the chimney. That is going to be rebuilt. And there is a letter from a mason in your packet, basically saying that the chimney does need to be rebuilt. And there's a condition of approval that the chimney be rebuilt in kind. These are some Sanborn maps showing from 1912 where there was a front porch. 1949, there was a front porch and sometime between 1949 and 1956, that porch was removed. Public comment, there's been quite a bit of public comment in support and in opposition to this project. Comments and opposition generally claim the addition of a porch will add too much building coverage to the lot. And the porch is inappropriate for the style of the house. It should be noted that there are comments, again, addressing the property to the north, which is associated with this ownership. But those comments should really be discarded and the merit of this project on its own should be the focus. Of the deliberation and the decision. Now it is, you know, in researching colonial homes, it is true, and this was mentioned in some of the comments. It is true that most colonial homes, it seems, had a smaller entry with a pediment over the top and and rounded columns. There are some examples of colonial homes with full front porches. So I did put a note in if the if the commission still sees that this front porch is not appropriate for this house style. That maybe the the commission can talk about an alternative to a cover for that entry or some sort of entry way. We we do, we have occasionally on the past on contributing houses that didn't have a stoop or an entry. Allowed that kind of thing on the front of a house. So again, if the porch is not, if this porch is not appropriate, then maybe there are some other considerations that the commission can can discuss and propose. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Let's hold any questions until after the applicant has. Given their presentation just for the sake of time, because it's starting to get a little late. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, please state your name and address for the record and you have 20 minutes.
Patrick Garrity. I live at 2020 North 15th Street and I also own 711 North 19th Street.
Did we lose you?
Yeah, I think that we're battling some internet connectivity issues.
We can hear you just fine on our end.
Okay. Am I able to share my screen?
Um, we're working on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Another participant needs to stop sharing their screen so that I can share mine. Thank you. Thank you, Commission Chair Montoto and Historic Commission members for allowing us to return to this body to reapply for this front porch. Commissioner Montoto, did my slide change?
It did, yes.
Wonderful. I know that we had an issue with that last time. So our proposal has three parts. One is to reconstruct a demolished front porch. One is to rehabilitate nonoriginal shutters. And the other is, and the third is to reconstruct an unsafe chimney. As Ted outlined very nicely, the front porch is one of our items. The house is listed in its survey as colonial revival. The porch was present during the period of significance. The porch is absent after the period of significance in its Sanborn map in 1956. And the Sanborn maps are used as evidence. At our previous meeting, the, and at this meeting, the historic office wrote a report supporting the the replacement of the porch. At our previous meeting and at this meeting, we received Nina's support as well. The porch was designed based on comments about the listed state of the house, which is colonial revival revival. And Commissioner Brown noted in our first application that the first iteration had a hipped roof and didn't appear colonial with features like a railing. So we worked with our architect to redesign this as a colonial revival porch. The chimney is not a visible feature from the front of the house. It was evaluated by a chimney mason. And the issue with its flue is that it's got a very small flue that can't be relined and can't be constructed so that it's safe to operate. So we plan to reconstruct the chimney with a code appropriate flue. This finding is the result of renovation and finding the existing state of the chimney was inadequate. The shutters are nonoriginal and they vary in size, in style. The lower shutters are panelled shutters and the upper shutters are. paneled shutters and the upper shutters are louvered and we'd like to unify the upper shutters to panel. My family would ask that you provide us fair consideration today and vote to approve this project. The house, as I will reiterate, had a front porch at its time of significance, which was removed after that. Our project meets the design guidelines. We have been supported by the historic staff's report. I think though it's not weighed off in, in this commission, this makes common sense for the north end to reconstruct a porch that was once present in a neighborhood that has many front porches, including on our block. And finally, the historic commission has recently approved other front porches under these exact same conditions. Some of my neighbors don't say this, but some do say that every house in the north end has a front porch, which is almost not a stretch. Some commissioners have asked for data about the historic north end. And unfortunately, as Mr. Benegas has told me, we don't have data about what percentage of houses in the north end have a front porch. Another neighbor told me, I always thought that house is missing something. And I think the historic photo and the Sanborn maps suggest that's true. And then another neighbor, our direct neighbor told us, I hope they let you put that front porch, that front porch back on. What drove me to come back to this commission was the helpful comments from Commissioner Brown at our first meeting. And also in March, seeing Mr. Venegas's presentation. And when I saw this slide, I thought, gosh, those houses look in mass and form, much like our house does. And that's from his guideline book. And so I reviewed your deliberations at this meeting and the facts about this project and found that that house was historically contributing. It had a porch that was demolished after its period of significance. Sanborn maps were used as evidence. It did not have a historical photo. It did require a front variant, a front, front property variance. It did require the destruction of its current stoop pediment, which was seen in its most current historic survey. It was supported by the historic office and it was also supported by Nina and that project was approved unanimously. And I thought the commission rationale at that meeting was quite useful. And I, I've listened to many of these meetings and I just want to note that I was surprised not to hear Commissioner Brown comment about this project. Commissioner Kosky did make comments about how commission, the commission should consider the addition of front porches based on surveys. But what was most important was what Commissioner Weaver said, which is that the commission uses Sanborn evidence to approve front porch, porch reconstructions. And that she noted that in interpreting the possible reasons for a survey finding, such as those surveys that have commonly occurred in 2000, 2001 and 2002, that modern surveys may ignore the absence of a front porch because they weren't, they were easily demolished. And that is to say they were not a structural component of the house. And when I saw that meeting and listened to this, I thought, I think that our house meets all of those criteria. I then received a notification in the mail about another project. And again, it seemed very similar to our project and met all of those categories. But this project wasn't heard by the commission. It was approved by consent without a discussion. But I thought, well, if we can get our architectural alignment correct to the current state of the house and we have evidence from the Sanborn maps, then it seems as though we have lined our project up just like these other neighbors have. I know that there are letters of opposition to our project. And I know that as Mr. and Mr. and Mrs. Smithman noted, there's a lot of anger over what occurred at the neighboring property. And in our property, we, we really can't assuage that anger. Mr. Smithman made a lot of different comments about our project, including lot coverage, which was adjudicated by this body and found to be appropriate. And we know that front porches don't count towards your lot coverage in the city because front porches are a value in and of itself. There have been some other, there's been some other commentary about architecture, including that our house has varying different styles. One person called it Victorian. Someone else called it an American four square and I am not an architect. Our architect, Leah McMillan, is an architect and has a lot of experience with architectural history. But I am a user of Google Images and I don't believe that our house fits into those categories as a disqualification. An architect who I don't know who lives near us also called the house Georgian. And I, I feel like if you look at our house, it certainly doesn't have the grandeur of a brick clad, multi-chimney, beautiful ornate Georgian house. I want to address one person's opposition letters specifically, however. And that's because of the tone with which she has taken on my family. She's a coworker of mine. She introduced us to the owner. She's encouraged us to reconstruct the front porch, including by providing a historic photo of the front porch. She's also started a social media shaming campaign against us while pretending not to know us. In her letter, she calls our house enormous, but publicly at these meetings, she's called our house monstrous and a monstrosity. While at her house directly next door, she's bragged to me that her house is worth at least $2 million. And I think by the information you can see there is also quite large. But what upset me the most was that she specifically encouraged us to do this. She told me in our meeting about how upset she was about the neighboring property on 11/25/2020, I quote, "I encouraged you." The house, in which she means 7-Eleven North 19th Street, there's nothing about what you're doing there. I mean, it looks like a great project. There's nothing about that. I love that you're going to put the front porch back on. Not that it's any of my business what you're going to do. I get that, right? And importantly, after our committee meeting on 11/30/2020, she immediately texted me, "Tough room there. Sorry about the porch. It would have been nice." And now she's written a fairly caustic letter about our front porch. And I know that people are angry, but I think what's most important about this project and this decision is that after our architectural corrections, we meet the same criteria that this body has used to approve other beautiful front porch reconstructions in the north end. And with that, I will take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you so much. Is the Registered Neighborhood Association here to testify?
Can you hear me?
You sure can. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, good evening. Once again, Kate Henwood, 1116 North 12th Street. As Mr. Garrity mentioned, his application does have Nina's support. Nina thinks the reconstructed porch and originally existing porch makes the house look more balanced and returns it to its previous and historic form. Opurable shutters that are consistent will also improve the look of the finished project. And we also support the chimney being rebuilt as it will strongly resemble the original and we be, will become a functional part of the house again. We are happy to support staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any members of the public wishing to testify this evening?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Hi, Sherry. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'll just be really brief. This is Sherry Betazawa at 311 North 23rd Street. And I only came on tonight to vouch for Mr. Garrity in that when I did previously serve on the North End Neighborhood Association Board in this role, we did support rebuilding the front porch and thought it really would be a nice addition to the property. So just wanted to be sure that's on the record and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to testify this evening?
Hello?
Hi, Miss Seeslack. Please state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Yeah, Mitzi C. Slack, 707 North 19th. And I have a prepared statement that's about three minutes long, but I would actually like an extra moment or two to respond to Mr. Garrity's comments about me. So the, the board may have to allow me an extra couple of minutes. I'm going to read my prepared statement. The addition of a front porch might have had validity if this was restoring the home to its original craftsman architecture. It is not, and I oppose. The architectural features, proportions and massive scale of this remodeled home have no relationship to the original modest craftsman, which included the front porch. The Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Homes is clear and highly specific with regards to replacement of missing front porches, stating that even though the replacement of historic features may be an accurate restoration based on the documentary and physical evidence, replacement should only be undertaken when historic entrances or ports to be replaced coexisted with the features currently on the building. Reestablishing missing historic features should not be undertaken if the missing features did not coexist with the features currently on the building. Juxtaposing historic features that did not exist concurrently will result in a false sense of the building's history. This language is unequivocal and speaks directly to this situation. This porch existed on this house only in its original form as a craftsman. The porch was removed the time the home was converted to a colonial and never coexisted with the current architectural colonial styles. I know this from Mrs. Joyce Dwight, who lived in the home for over 50 years. She had a keen interest in historical preservation. In her research, she had discovered that an East Coast family had purchased the home and converted it to a more familiar colonial style, removing the front porch. Mrs. White registered the home on the National Register of Historic Homes in the architectural colonial style without the front porch, establishing and reinforcing the historical significance without the porch and consistent with the Interior Secretary's further guidelines that most properties change over time and those changes that have acquired historic significance in their own right shall be retained and preserved. Additionally, this front porch addition would further expand the visual footprint of this already enormous project. I have an original wide angle 1912 photo of 19th Street hanging in my dining room. The original home with the front porch was of modest proportions and did not dominate the street. The remodeled home will visually dominate the street. It is out of scale and proportion in the neighborhood, being two to three times larger than the original home and the other homes in the area. Further expansion with a front porch addition will alter the feel of the street and the neighborhood vistas even more and will be detrimental to the current harmonious interface of the street with its park-like yards fronting the sidewalk. As the homeowner immediately next door, this project has had a devastating impact on the vistas at my home. Expanding the footprint of the house with a porch will further harm the views, approach and street appearance of my own historic home. This front porch addition is undeniably in direct contradiction to the treatment of historic homes as clearly stated by the Interior Secretary and should be denied. With regards to Mr. Garrity's personal attack on me, I think it's inappropriate in this setting. I originally thought a front porch addition would be lovely on this building because I was not fully aware at just how massive this project was going to be. 6,900 square feet and a four-car garage. Seeing the plans and watching the house go up has made me realize what a dramatic impact this has had on the neighborhood and in a negative fashion. And so I objected to that. I never mentioned that I knew him because that would be inappropriate. Right? It is inappropriate for him to attack me personally and to show pictures of my home, which have no bearing on this project at hand. I would request that the board look at the facts as dictated by the Interior Secretary and deny this project. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miss Seeslack. Are there any other members of the public tonight wishing to testify? It doesn't appear so. Mr. Garrity, if you would like, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Can I raise my hand?
Yeah.
Mr. Garrity, are you there?
Yes, I'm here now. I'm sorry.
Oh, perfect. We just want to make sure we had you. You have five minutes for rebuttal if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you so much. Thank you to the Nina Historic Committee for providing us support. And thank you from, to Miss Seeslack for her comments. Miss Seeslack is bringing both vengeance and righteousness to this meeting, neither of which are appropriate. And I think she emphasized something that's really important, which are the facts. And she doesn't know them. And frankly, I don't think that they, they may not be knowable. She reports that the last family who moved into this house in the 1960s purchased a home from a family that turned it into a colonial revival. And I would argue that that family may have had a colonial revival with a porch and we just don't know. So my argument would be in 1949, this house was a colonial revival. It had a front porch. The 1950s came and it sounds like in the Boise's North End, the removal of porches was common and endemic, as I've seen so many projects here request placing the front porch back on. The only other thing I would say is that Miss Seeslack continues to discuss the size of our project. As I have told you, it was adjudicated by this body under your current lot coverage rules, which are that the project should not exceed over 35% of lot coverage. It's important to know, and I'm sure that because you all review so many projects, you don't remember exactly the details of this one, but this house had a 1,000 square foot wood shop in the backyard, a 1,000 square foot footprint wood shop. It also had a large 1970s edition in the backyard. So changes in lot coverage of this house are quite minimal. I will concede that any change to a neighbor's property then changes may change part of your view and that, that may be true for Miss Seeslack. She mentioned in our last meeting that it would be a change to our privacy. And I think certainly having a family next door is probably a change to your privacy. So I, I think that I tried to make my points about this body's decision-making on front porches in my presentation. And my, my, my main point about this particular opposition letter is that it's about vengeance and it's not about the facts. And with that, I will open myself up to questions from the commission.
Thank you so much. Are there any final questions for either staff or Mr. Garrity? Okay, thank you so much. With that, I will go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing and we'll consider a motion or discussion.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll start discussion.
Thank you.
It's probably worth just reminding each of us that this is about the porch, not about anything else that's happened next door or any of the motions that have have come to come out tonight. So I have concern with the, with the portion. I'm, I'm glad we're going to start with a little bit of discussion because while historically looking at the Sanborn maps and that, we know that there was a porch on there, but we also know that the house has changed style and it's changed style significantly from a craftsman to a colonial revival. And at least those are the words that have been used mostly. And if you look at the current survey that we have, recognizing it as historically contributing home, it's recognized as a colonial revival home. And colonial revival homes did not have full with porches like this. So that's my, my biggest concern and I, I'm, would love to have more input from the other commissioners and in, in, in Commissioner Brown, your, from your historic side and as, as well as the architect commissioners that we have here on the design, I would be really interested in hearing what really interested in hearing what their opinions are.
So I have the same concerns as I did last time, that it's a conjectural feature that we're adding to this house. It was a craftsman-style house. It did have a porch and then styles shifted and what became in was a colonial revival-style house, and we know that it didn't have a porch. So adding this porch, it's the same as I said last time, it's the same as Miss Cislock said, but it does create a false sense of history. We shouldn't be adding conjectural features to this this house. And then we've approved two other projects, but those are on their own merit, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Are there any other comments or perhaps a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Rupp, although I wasn't here for the first meeting that this was presented at, based on what I reviewed today in the presentation and staff's recommendations, I do not see any concerns with approving this as proposed based on staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner Rupp. Commissioner Kosky, did you have?
Yeah, one other concern I had is, and of course, they're going to have to go for a variance if this gets approved, but not only are we putting a porch on a colonial revival, historically contributing house, but we're also going two and two feet, four inches past the the frontage or the lot spacing on the front. And those those two things are alarming to me, and with that, I would not be able to approve this, vote to approve this.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosky. Would anyone like to make a motion or add any further comments?
I can make a motion to get this night over with, so I motion not to approve DRH twenty-one dash zero zero one eight seven based on two point four point one three conflict with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for rehabilitation. Specifically, standard number three, each property shall be recognized as a true physical record of its time. Place and use changes that create a false sense of historical development such as adding conjectural features or architectural elements from other buildings shall not be undertaken.
Thank you. And I think I was gonna clarify what you were gonna clarify, just was that a motion to deny?
Okay, sorry.
Motion to deny, sorry. Is that what you were gonna say, Ted?
I was just gonna make sure the entire project's being denied or?
Right, because we have multiple pieces, yes.
Yeah. Window or in the chimney reconstruction as well as the putting the operable shutters back on, so. I just want clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Ted. Is there is there any opposition from the commission on the removal and reconstruction of the chimney and replacement of the window shutters? Are we just having finding issue with the front porch? Just to clarify.
I think just the porch, I can try to re-clarify.
Yeah, so if you want to, just to make things easier, we'll let that motion die. And if you want to make a motion to approve the project with the exception of or denial of the front porch aspect, however you want to do it, that would be great.
Okay, I motion to approve DRH twenty-one dash zero zero one eight seven for the removal and reconstruction of the chimney and replace window shutters. This does not include the addition of the front porch.
Striking the front porch. Yeah.
I will second that.
Great. Victoria, would you please call the roll?
Rupp?
Nay.
Kosky?
Hi.
Weaver?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Pape?
Aye.
Montoto?
Aye.
Motion carries five in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. And our last item tonight is item number eleven, DRH two-one dash zero zero one eight nine, Brian Gilbreth at fourteen twelve North Twenty-second Street. Ted, can we please have the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, this is a request to add a second story to an existing garage for an accessory dwelling unit that is in the expanded North End and is non, the house is considered non-contributing. This is a aerial of the property. As you can see, it's a large interior lot. And this is a shot of the existing, this is the non-contributing house and garage existing to the right. The garage will be a second, again, a second story proposed for that garage. And this is the site plan. The project will be due to the project, right now, the garage would meet setbacks, but due to the expansion of the garage into a much larger structure, a variance would be required unless the applicant reduces the overall square foot of the project. Additionally, if the ADU is approved, if the if the project is approved, a variance would be required to, the proposal for the ADU space is beyond seven hundred square feet. So that's something that would have to be worked out with the separate ADU application. But because the with the addition of the second story on this existing one-story garage, it appears that the overall square feet of the structure will then be a little bit over a thousand square feet. City code requires that structures, detached accessory structures over a thousand square feet must meet standard setbacks for the zone. That would require a fifteen-foot setback for the project, so because it's an existing structure, the applicant would then will have to either reduce the second story addition or go and get a variance request from the Planning and Zoning Commission. These are the elevations. The bottom half with the lap siding and the top with the board and batten. And these are some color elevations. And these are some visuals of the alley. You can see there are some other two-story structures. And then the concerns are that the garage will be, or the new garage ADU will be about four feet taller than the existing house. The existing house is a one-story. I believe the survey refers to it as a ranch-style home. So again, this is one of those situations where you have a one-story home. And with a request for you want a half to two-story, in this case, a two-story ADU. You know, twenty feet to the peak is not an overly large structure. So it seems somewhat somewhat reasonable, however, due to the limited height of the house at sixteen feet to the peak, it creates that that problem with our current guidelines. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ted?
Ted, I just had a quick question. Do you know the height of the houses adjacent to this one?
I don't know the height of the houses adjacent to it. Maybe the applicant can expand on that. There are other two-story garages in the alley, however.
Okay, thank you, Ted.
Any other questions? Okay, is the applicant present?
Hello?
Hi, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Brian Gilbreth seventeen eleven North Eleventh Street.
Wonderful. You have twenty minutes.
Okay, well, the to answer the question about the neighboring properties, the actually, this is one of the shorter houses on the block. Most of the houses around it, across the street from it, are all two-story. The houses on either side of it have higher pitched roofs. You can see in the photo where it shows the front. There's a there's a two-story next to it. So they'll be much higher than the garage. We did a little study in our exhibit that shows the sightlines that you could potentially have from the sidewalk or street or even across the street. And it, the only time you're going to see this most likely is if you get a view between the houses towards the backyard, so. We did everything we could to keep the height down, knowing that we, you know, what we were up against, trying to keep it below the height of a single story. The original structure is kind of a lower slope hip roof for the the primary part of the structure. And so we, in our proposal, we're showing a lower slope roof, but then to give it a little bit of visual interest, we just kept a little ease similar to the pitch that the garage is currently. But we're proposing a lower slope to try to keep us down as low as possible. And at least from our studies, it doesn't it doesn't appear that it will be viewed from the street, actually. I believe that's all I have to say.
Perfect. Okay, are there any questions for the applicant? Wonderful. Thank you so much. Is the Registered Neighborhood Association here to testify?
Hello, once again, Kate Henwood, one 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 six North Twelfth Street. Yeah, so although the second story addition will be slightly taller than the single-story house, architectural renderings of the sightlines and a site visit by our committee confirm it will be, this addition would be very unobtrusive and actually almost invisible from the street. The addition was designed as short as possible with seven-foot walls and a low-slope roof. It also has the benefit of being on an interior lot and is surrounded by many large and mature trees. So we support staff's recommendation for approval. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Henwood. Are there any members of the public wishing to testify this evening? It doesn't appear so. Mr. Gilbreth, if you would like, you have five minutes for rebuttal, or you may yield your time.
I will yield my time.
Wonderful, thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing and will consider a motion or entertain some discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to open up some discussion.
Please, Commissioner Kosky.
You know, we talked a little bit about this in work session as a as a commission, but you know, with the desire for additional living units and the struggles as homeowners and and architects to create that, and also as a city as to how we handle handle that. I understand that we desire to have these. But I also understand we have a guidelines that say a number of different things, including having it not be taller, ADUs not be taller than the house. If, among other things. So, you know, as we consider these things, we need to consider all of the whole body of the project. And when I see a project like this, that the house is four feet or the ADU is four feet taller than the house, it's it's what is that, twenty percent? Twenty percent taller than the house? The setbacks, they're at three feet and it should be fifteen feet, so they're overstepping the setback by twelve feet. And code, it's exceeding code for square footage of an ADU, so we're exceeding square footage. We've significantly gone outside of the setback and it's significantly higher than the house. And when I see those three things, I I say, well, I say we should, according to the guidelines, I say this is going to be a tough one for me to approve. It's it's a massing issue. It's a size issue. We've gone, I mean, if it's one of the three, that's one thing. But we got we got three different things we're exceeding, and that's a little alarming to me. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosky. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to add?
I mean, I have the same concerns as Commissioner Kosky. I think we should probably have a detailed discussion in a work session about ADUs soon because of what our guidance says and what's being proposed at every single monthly meeting. So I think it's a serious discussion we do have if they're exceeding lot or the square footage, the setback and the height. Our guidance says not to approve it, so, yeah, but we do need housing, so.
It's definitely a tricky one. You know, again, city goals are really encouraging ADUs. And, you know, me personally, as as a homeowner in a historic district in an eleven thousand square foot house, not having a garage, it's hard. And, you know, according to our guidelines, basically, any single-story house in a historic district shouldn't have an ADU because it's gonna be significantly taller than the house. I mean, there's really no way to get livable space in an existing single-story garage. It's just not gonna happen. And so we we need to look past the guidelines, I think, in circumstances like this. And, you know, I think moving forward, it is one hundred percent the discussion we need to have. But we really need, we need housing, we need it, and I think we need it more than variances and looking at exceeding lot coverage and all of those things. There's an opportunity here to make it work for this family, to make this home livable for this family. And again, it's the garage ADU we're talking about. So I will one hundred percent be supporting this application, and I would really love to entertain a motion if anyone has one to offer. Or additional discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll offer some additional discussion as we're we're seem to all be considering how to how to make a motion on this project. I'm going to read out of our guidelines because that's what we're here to uphold. And it it does state in section six point one point two, and I'll read it. It says, maintain a proportional mass, size and height to ensure the accessory accessory building or dwelling unit is not taller than the primary building on the lot. It also shows a figure of six point one point one. I'll also read also read six point one point one zero, which states, design the accessory dwelling unit or garage to visually compete with or overpower the primary building on the lot. Those two things in the guidelines, plus the twelve feet over the setback and the square footage size and the height of the house or the ADU. Unless unless our guidelines are changed, I struggle, so I just thought I'd read that out of our guidelines for reference for everybody else.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosky. I very much appreciate that. And I would like to state our guidelines are not one hundred percent written in blood. They are guidelines to guide us. Again, we have a housing, a severe lack of housing in our city and an influx of people moving here, and I really think that this is something that outweighs guidelines in this particular circumstance. And in circumstances in in most single-story homes, because again, with that, with that guideline, it's not going to happen on any single-story home, and how much housing density are we losing when we look at that greater picture?
This is Commissioner, and just to play devil's advocate though. As this evening, Mr. Claire mentioned in the context that when you buy a home in the North End or into the East End and you have a historic district that you're choosing to live in, for which he referenced that he made his personal commitment to not, to uphold the integrity of his home and to not make any significant changes for which he had concerns for the proposed. Home that he was speaking to this evening. But that is part of the, that is the, the pros and the cons of living in the East End and the North End. So playing devil's advocate, which I am an ADU fan, so I would not be opposed to this project, but I'm also, you know, inconsistency along this evening. I wholeheartedly believe a lot of what Mr. Klinger spoke to in that it's not about the me, it's about the collective we and where we are headed and how do we support our community. But I also support our staff and all of the recommendations that they've made this evening, I would have supported. So that's why the actions that I took have been as such. And so I would support this, but I'm also in the context that to Commissioner Koski's point, the rules are the rules and we have them laid out. And today, nine times out of 10, everybody wants the survey to be done, to be redone because it doesn't benefit them to their conversations of up until today or the, up until this one. In which case now we're going to stand on it because it's like, it helps us be able to deny an application because there's not meeting anything, so. It's, you know, just playing devil's advocate a little bit on that sense, so. I mean, I would be supportive of this, but I can also see where Commissioner Koski's coming from in the sense that there are three significant things that this homeowner is not meeting and they would have to have variances for, which is clearly articulated by staff that says, if we approve it, they still have to get all of these things. So those could be denied for which it wouldn't proceed, but that does not allow us from stopping us from doing our job, which would be to approve based on those conditions of approval. But to Koski's point, those conditions of approval are letting a, letting a pass on three significant items. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm still deciding on what I would do, but I just had to say that point of playing devil's advocate from earlier this evening's events also.
I have a question. I like you playing devil's advocate, Commissioner Rap. Do you think that, could we add a condition of approval that it, the new ADU will not exceed? What is it, Commissioner Koski, 700?
700 square feet. We could do, we could do that.
Would that even make it?
We could, we could.
I mean.
Put a condition approval that it, Madam Chair, can I speak?
Please.
That you, you could make a proposal or a, a motion to have it not exceed a certain square feet and not exceed a height, certain height if you want, or in, but to your point, if it didn't exceed. The square footage that puts it into the next category for setbacks, then two of those three. Items that they're exceeding on would go away and the only one left would be the height. So yes, I believe we can make that motion if you'd want to.
I assume there's a reason that the city has a guideline of 700 square feet for ADU. So, I mean, I would be in support of doing that to approve the project. Shrinking of the square footage. I don't know how other people feel.
Ma- Madam Chair, and just I guess a comment, and I would, I would be in support of that. It, you know, as we talked about before, we can't tell someone what they use their house and property for, so we can't even, I guess, guarantee that this property would add additional housing to the neighborhood and to allow so many of the guidelines. I mean, in addition to the setbacks and things, there's other guidelines in here that are being bent or kind of exceeded quite a bit. And so I think that, you know, not, you know, not being able to. Guide or, or require a use for any of this, you know, I, I don't know if it's worth it in my mind to allow the guidelines to be bent so much for something we don't really even know what it's going to do to enhance the neighborhood's housing problem.
Would someone like to make a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Weaver.
I guess I will make a motion. I motion to approve DRH 21-00189 with the staff recommended conditions of approval and that the overall square footage of 700 square feet will not be. Exceeded, that's the word.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Victoria, will you please call the roll?
Rap?
Aye.
Koski?
Nay.
Weaver?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Pape?
Aye.
Montoto?
Aye.
On, oh, five in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our hearing this evening. Thank you all so much and we will see you next month.